Evening, we're calling the city council meeting to order. We've just come out of closed session. George, you want to give a report from closed session?
Oh, you're not to that point on the agenda yet.
Oh, let's let, sorry.
Well, allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our heart.
Do we do roll call? Yes. Is that the public comment?
No, and it's next, roll call.
No, no, my report out of closed session. So roll call.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitmer?
Here.
Councilmember Wees?
Here.
Councilmember Olympus?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Here.
Mayor DeGolio?
Here.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is introduction and oath of office.
Mayor and members of the council, it gives me great pleasure to see King Peter just offer Sir Leanne Alfonso. Leanne, would you come stand here, please? Thank you. I'd like to just read a little bio on Leanne. Leanne was born and raised in San Jose, California. She graduated from San Jose State University, which had put a bachelor's degree in public relations and a minor in business administration. In April of nineteen ninety-seven, Leanne joined the San Jose Police Department, where she worked a variety of assignments, such as patrol, family violence unit, and served on Santa Clara County's death review board, and served in the administrative training unit, where she was personally responsible for training some fourteen hundred sworn personnel, and served as a recruiting officer and as a background investigator, and was personally credited for doing more than thirty investigations that resulted in higher hiring new employees. Leanne has instructor certifications in defensive tactics, simulations, emergency vehicle operations, force options, and is one of a handful of qualified individuals that are, that teach emergency response to weapons of mass destruction. Additionally, Leanne developed the San Jose Police Department's wellness program, which included the founding of California First Law Enforcement CrossFit affiliate, CrossFit San Jose P D. She also co-developed the department's first professional development program, and served as a subject matter expert in fitness and nutrition for the Women's Leadership and Law Enforcement Symposium, where she speaks annually as a guest speaker and lecturer. In her personal life, Leanne is the wife of two kids and a mother, and a, no, she's a wife and a husband. Mother of two children, sorry. She juggles a very busy home life and a professional law enforcement career and her passion for physical fitness training, which includes serving as a conditioning coach for Premier Travel Soccer Club. Leanne continues to challenge herself physically by competing in local athletic events such as CrossFit, half marathons, and adventure runs. Leanne is joined this evening by her parents Kathy and retired Sergeant Larry Goodman from the Santa Clara County Sheriff's Department, her sister Summer, and brother-in-law Randall Spohman. Additionally, in attendance this evening, we have Deputy Chief Jeff Marozak and Sergeant Brian Meisner from the San Jose Police Department. Also in attendance is my friend and colleague Deputy Chief Gary Kirby from Redwood City Police Department, who also served with San Jose Police Department. And along the back, we have a variety of officers, sergeants, and lieutenants from the Athens Police Department and our C S O officers. So really glad to have all of you here. Before the penning of the badge by your daughters and husbands, I would like to administer the oath of office. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Leanne Alfonso.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will, will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
All right, good job.
Well, I just want to say on behalf of the city council, we're very honored to have you.
Thank you very much, I'm very glad to be here.
And we're, it's a testament to you how many of your colleagues have shown up to witness your swearing in. Really, we're honored.
Thank you guys, I appreciate it.
And Leanne, based on your resume, you'll help us all get back in shape.
CrossFit.
There'll be a small run after the conversation.
Plum caller.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a proclamation regarding this being Red Cross Month. And I believe that Tricia Punnet is here.
Yeah, Tricia.
Tricia didn't, okay.
Sure, I'm sure she's seen that. Sure.
So, I mean, can you do the proclamation, read it? The, whereas March is American Red Cross Month, a special time to recognize and thank our everyday heroes, those who reach out to help their neighbors when they are in need. American Red Cross heroes are on the front lines every day. They volunteer their time, give blood, take life-saving courses, or provide financial donations to those in need. There are a series of other wherashes in this proclamation. But the conclusion is that now, therefore, I, Rick DeGolio, a mayor of the town of Atherton, by virtue of authority vested in me by the Constitution, the laws of the town of Atherton in California, do hereby proclaim March two thousand fifteen as American Red Cross Month. I encourage all Americans to support this organization and its noble humanitarian mission. In witness whereof, I have set my hand unto this, the eighteenth of March, in the town of Atherton.
Thank you.
And if I, if I could just acknowledge one other Red Cross volunteer who's a regular at all of our councilmembers, Barbara Wood, I know that you spent many, spent many years doing Red Cross volunteering and have had a lot of experience in it, so thank you for your dedication and thank you for being here to report what we do tonight. You're welcome. Okay.
And now, with good timing, we have a report out of the closed session.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the city council met in closed session to give you one item of potential litigation. The council heard a report and gave directions to the city attorney to take certain actions. Thank you.
And the next item on the agenda, which I just skipped, is public comments. So if there are any public comments on areas that are not on the agenda tonight, please come up and give your comment. Yeah?
So, I just wanted to say that, you know, we have this over-regulated society now, and we definitely need a city attorney to, you know, follow all these complex, you know, rules. I mean, I'm city manager, but part of the reason, you know, he organizes to have a safe and a beautiful place. And a lot of these plantings that are, you know, less than six feet away from the road, they, they make the town more beautiful. And I would really hate to see, you know, a lot of that stuff, you know, being forced to change. And I was just wondering if the council had considered, you know, just sort of granting everybody a variance and then from this time forward, you know, having stricter regulation. And also if there's some liability issue, I mean, maybe there's a Lloyds of London policy or something like that, which could take into account the variances that we accept. Because, I mean, the, the laws are for our protection, but when the laws start, you know, making everything, you know, more ugly, then are they really serving the purpose that they're designed for anyway? So I hope that you'll consider this thing.
Thanks, Anne. Yeah, you can just hand it up.
Hi there, my name's Omar Chatty and I live in South San Jose where an individual was killed that I used to see at the Safeway. At the local grocery store, was killed by Caltrain, and another one recently a few weeks ago. So I have been keeping track of them ever since then, of how many people. So yesterday we hit our two-hundred-and-twentieth person killed since nineteen ninety-five when, on the, on the cap, on the Caltrain corridor tracks. Ever since nineteen ninety-five, when according to Dan Richards, the California High-Speed Rail Authority decided that they were going to use the Caltrain tracks because of the same size width. And that was, it's available on KCBS, January eleventh interview with him. So I've been going to the city councils, this is the first time I'm here, and I'm glad to be here because you guys have your lawsuit going, and I wanted to encourage that. It's very important, and I'm going to the other city councils to ask them to join in, but they're, they're Democrat-controlled, so I'm not sure they're gonna, they're gonna join in. But they should, because, I mean, I just heard the train out here, this is ridiculous. This is, you know, I worked in Silicon Valley High Tech and H P and Oracle and a lot of the big companies, and, you know, you get, you push this, this stuff goes away after a while, and you do modern things and current things. And eighteen sixty-four tracks don't work. So I've been advocating to restart the BART down here, because BART cars are a lot lighter, and they don't need the heavy embankments that the freight trains need, they can be trenched, and you can have a beautiful aerial overhead if that's acceptable to your city. But BART works for the city, because I also go to the San Jose meetings on BART coming in there. So I wanted to just underscore the fatalities and the danger of this, of this train. It doesn't belong anymore, it's not eighteen sixty-four where it's rural, where now very, very dense, notwithstanding Atherton. But, and I just really hope you guys will keep up your lawsuit. I'll try to get, I'll do what I can, just as a citizen, which doesn't amount to much, to try to get other cities to join in with letters to the editor, because this train needs to go. It doesn't belong in a high-tech environment, it doesn't belong in Silicon Valley. BART does, because it's great except for, so I guess that means that's it. So thank you for your time, and I'm glad to be here, Atherton people are.
It means you have one day remaining.
Oh, does it, okay, well, I'll try not.
Yellow is just.
Yeah, notwithstanding my last name, which is Chatty, I'll try not to go off. So anyway, I'm just trying to think of anything else. So I don't know what else we could do, but, you know, I went to Burlingame, their meeting, and asked them to include in their underpass study capacity for BART. Maybe if that, if you guys do an underpass study like Menlo Park is and Palo Alto, we can consider that as an alternative. There really are good options, and I thank you again for your leadership. Wealthy communities like Atherton have successful people, and one of the successful hallmarks of success, as you know, is persistence. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have written reports to ask here to answer any questions you might have. I'm just going to note, you might note that the report is getting bigger and bigger and including more and more information. The report's becoming a pretty decent public information document available on the town's website on a regular monthly basis. Also, as you move on to the consent agenda, I'd like to have a couple of comments on that before the council moves on that.
Okay. Any questions from the council in the city manager's report? Okay, we will move to the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I had two items, just, you received an email from me from the one-on-one conversations. Those items are the minutes for the February nineteenth. If it's the council's desire, we can change the language within item number eighteen to more accurately reflect the possibility of the council's action, which was February eighteenth, sorry?
December.
I did, yes, sorry, February eighteenth, to reflect that on the operational study for El Camino Real, the council's action was to temporarily halt or halt whatever the council's intent was at that meeting. We can modify those minutes appropriately if you so desire, or you can leave them as they are. The second item was the administrative changes to the record retention schedule. A council member noted that there were holes of office mentioned in a couple of locations, that'll be corrected. A typographical error in the information technology hardware section, and then, there's a word spelled incorrectly on one of the other sections. We'll make those changes administratively as the council adopts it. And then the formation of the B-PAC, it was recommended, that's item number eleven, recommended that we remove the word "public" from the public schools representative and just make it a schools representative, so we can not have to discern that it's a public, or primary school. Those are the three administrative changes staff recommended on those items.
Great. So we are at the consent calendar, if there's any item on the consent calendar that a member of the public would like to poll, could you let us know? Hearing none, is there any item, any member of the council would like to poll? No, can I get a motion?
Move to accept the consent calendar with the administrative changes as designated by the city manager.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that takes us through item seventeen up to the public hearing regarding the parcel map. That's on the town planner.
Thank you. The application before you is a request for a tentative parcel map to allow the subdivision of an existing two-point-six acre parcel into two legal lots at forty-nine Tuscaloosa Avenue. The applicant would like to create parcel one at one-point-five acres and a second parcel at just over one acre in area. This item was reviewed by the planning commission at its January twenty-eighth meeting, and they voted to recommend the city council approve the tentative parcel map. The, the property does have adequate frontage along the public right-of-way and does also meet the depth that's required for the minimum lot size as well as the minimum lot area. As you'll note in the condition of approval, the, a portion of the existing residents would be considered non-conforming with this subdivision, so that portion of the residents would either need to be modified or completely demolished prior to city council acceptance of the final map and prior to recordation of the final map. I understand it's the intent of the applicant to, you know, proceed as quickly as they can to build two new residences, so it's certainly their intent to demolish the existing residents. The applicant is here this evening, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions as well.
Is there any public comment on this issue? Okay, hearing none, any questions from the council?
I have a question, it's really more in the nature of background for my, for me, and that is simply, there's two assessor parcels, can you talk to me a little bit about the difference between assessor parcels and lots and purpose of it and how it lines up?
Sure, so the subdivision map back has, and the town subdivision ordinance has specific requirements for the division of property. And since I believe nineteen seventy-one, that needs to happen through the creation of a map, like parcel map, tentative parcel map, or a major parcel map, and it cannot happen by de-transfer to create parcels. I'm not sure how exactly this assessor parcel is assigned, but the assignment of assessor parcels is a county function, and it's really a tax function. So it doesn't establish if something is a legal lot or not, it's really for their tax collecting purposes. So you could have two legal lots with one assessed parcel.
And assuming that this is approved, would the lot be identical to the assessed parcel?
It's very similar, there's a slight shift in that, but it's very similar.
Any questions?
She answered my question.
Okay, any comment?
I, I think that the staff report's very detailed in the arguments and the basis for all the findings for the allowing this to be divided, and I think, I think it's a good thing. It'll add housing stock to our town, and it will set back the houses and, you know, preserve trees and things like that. So I think it's a good thing.
Any other comment? Can I get a motion?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Moving on, next item is the housing element update, which Lisa, it's also on you.
Thank you. This came before you as the draft housing element at a previous meeting, and at that time you had accepted the housing element and directed that it be forwarded to the State Department of Housing and Community Development for its review. They have concluded their review, we did have one conference call with them where they had a number of questions that I think we adequately responded to. And so we've incorporated the, the comments of the state, and the item's been reviewed again by the planning commission. And the planning commission does recommend that the city council adopt the housing element. Josh Abrams, the consultant that's helped us prepare the documents, is here this evening. He could give you a brief walkthrough, answer your questions, or he can just smile and, whatever you'd like this evening.
Any questions?
No, sorry.
No questions. Is there any public comment on this issue? Hearing none, comments from the council?
I just have one, so it's ninety housing units this time, and previously, wasn't it like ninety-three?
I think it's ninety-three this time, I think it was eighty-eight last time.
Oh, so I thought I saw.
See, the staff report says ninety-nine. A lot of names.
Then it was mine only ten-one.
Okay, well, you should sort that out, I had it note through as ninety-three this time.
Oh, so, okay, so it is the ninety-three then, okay, that's what I actually called.
And then, and then you'll subtract any units that are actually, that are already built from that ninety-three.
I'm excited about getting this done and approved, and I thought all your answers to the, the, you know, the changes were adequate and the clarifying, but well done.
Thank you. Great, can I get a resolution to adopt the twenty-fourteen twenty-two housing element?
No, I'd like to.
Sorry, go, it's good.
Okay, thank you. Please. First off, I'm glad we've got, you know, to this, this stage. I guess I, I still have a couple of concerns with regards to this, because I don't want to see Atherton get into a similar position as perhaps some of the towns surrounding us. Seems that we're putting an awful lot of stock in Menlo College and their expansion plans, which here too far have not actually taken place, and they've, they've been in the plan for quite some time. And also putting a lot of stock in that we're going to build these secondary dwelling units and give them to, and we're making a comment that, by the way, oh, by the way, there'll be no, no fees attached to it, because we're pre-assuming that they're just going to be given to either domestic, domestic help or, or family members that, that are moving back home, or, or elderly's coming in to, so they don't have to go to, you know, more impersonalized care. And so to me, it seems, especially given the situation, you know, with, with Menlo College, I know Menlo College is looking at their plans to, to grow and things like that, but at the same time, we really haven't grown. They've, they've shown recently that they're facing a little bit of a budget crunch, and, and they, you know, there've been some interesting discussions between, you know, the town and, and Menlo. So, you know, there's a potential that, that they won't come through on this. And so I'd like to really know, at the end of this, this period of time, what could be the ramifications, or could we just continue to make the same promises?
Well, I can start, and then you can add if you want. We are required to show that we've planned for the housing, we're not required to build the housing. So it would be similar to, you know, any other community that has multifamily zoning, and the market's just not there right, and, you know, the city's not required to build the housing, you need the private market to respond. We have shown the, the housing on the, the school campuses, we feel pretty good about that. The state, you know, has looked favorably upon it, but as you said, they are a little concerned, what if that doesn't proceed? If it does not, we're going to have to look at another option. And what the state would love us to do is rezone property for multifamily development. And I know that's not going to be, you know, favorable, but we may want to look at some cluster developments, and, you know, smaller-sized housing, maybe focus more on senior communities. But, you know, we'll keep moving forward, I think, with this plan until we really get some strong pushback from the state. The other thing on the, the second dwelling units, we are seeing really good production on that, and I think changing the code, the last go-around really helped. And we are required to do a survey, I think, every year, every other year. We'll survey the people that have the second dwelling units and see what they're reporting as far as how are they renting it and what income levels, and that'd be the information we show the state. But we're seeing some really good production, some interest in either keeping the rent low or, you know, not renting them out.
Okay, all right, so with regards to Menlo College, and my, just my last comment. And it's just something, as we look forward, to try and make sure that we keep the plan in place. You know, there've been discussions, I guess during the last election, there, there was discussions or questions from the, from the student body and, and some of the administrators about potentially growing the enrollment there, which is fine, you know, obviously they would have to go through all the steps that need to go through. But I think one of the things, there's not much space there on that campus. And so to add more classrooms, to grow the enrollment, will require potentially pushing, just like we're seeing with the public schools. They get rid of the playing fields and put more buildings on there, and then they expect us to handle them in our park. Similarly, you know, they'll want to displace the people potentially, or the, the dorms for more classroom space, because that's a revenue generator. And so as they're coming forward with these plans, I think we just need to be cognizant that, that we want to have a certain percentage of, of, of the student enrollment actually living and having the full college experience. And I know that we look periodically at their, at their plans, and I think they're getting ready potentially to give us a new update in the, in the near future, but I would, I'd like to make sure that the planning staff keeps that in the back of their mind. That that's the only way I think we can continue to keep them kind of on the hook for this is, as we grow their opportunity, you know, their, their, their enrollment opportunities that, that a certain percentage stays on campus so that we have that, that head count.
Good, okay.
Okay, so thank you for listening.
Any other comment?
I, I will just say that in what restrictions that we have related to our community that we have in going through this, I thought it was real creative, and I know this is really truly a guide, and it's almost as if to try to give somebody the option on the other side to work with some of the tools that we try to create that can give us that housing requirement. So, and, and Councilman Whitner's comments, you know, clearly, if it doesn't work on the campus and we're not giving the housing requirement, doesn't mean we're going to duck it all into the campuses, and that's something that we've got to be very well aware of, because there are other issues that go with that. But I thought it was very, you know, it's a very creative way to try to meet some housing requirements and create housing for people. And, you know, it, it doesn't really make that fair housing, because there's nothing really fair in this town as far as cost of things, but it does give us some ability to, to produce some housing. So I just, I just thought it was very good and detailed. And again, if it doesn't work, we'll shift it and create other ways to try to make it, so.
I'm, I'm just happy that, you know, that they're going to accept it.
Yeah.
I think we should, and move on.
Yeah, I, I just like to comment, with respect to the second housing units, yesterday I participated in the Little House activity of Mayor's Meals on Wheels. Oh, that was this morning, I'm still on Australian.
I was with him, I was with her, we took her.
One of the houses that we went to, there was an elderly woman who was living with her sixty-some-year-old children, and she was living there because of exactly this issue. It was a low-income housing opportunity for her that was being taken advantage of. So I'm glad to see that happening, I'm glad that we're using. I'm glad that we're using that. I think that it is an appropriate use and, uh, and it meets the housing requirement here. Uh, I, I have a question. If Menlo College doesn't do the build-out as recommended, I, I assume that's something we look at at the end of this term? Is that correct?
That was one of the changes the state asked for. They asked us to look at it in twenty-twenty and see how things are going. So there's time to make some changes this term, so we don't get to twenty-twenty-three and say to the state, hey, we have these new ideas. They want us to, if, if there's no action, they want us to try those changes be, within the planning period.
Great.
So.
Any other comment? No, no. How about a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the final housing element update as recommended by the Planning Commission and subsequently transmit the adopted element to the California Department of Housing and Community Development post haste.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unopposed, looks unanimous. Okay, we're going to move on. The next item is a regular agenda item, the Award of Civic Center Project Design Professional Services Agreement. Uh, that is Mike.
Yes, I'm Mayor DeGolia, members of the City Council. I don't really have anything more to add than what's in your staff report, but if I can just real briefly, uh, summarize the recommendations, staff recommendations, uh, to say that by approving the staff recommendations in your, in your report, the City Council will be approving selection of WRNS Studio as the design team for your Civic Center project. Uh, you will be accepting the WRNS proposal and negotiated scope of services identified as phases one through seven in your staff report. Um, by approving our recommendations, you will also be directing the city attorney to prepare the consultant services agreement and authorizing the city manager to sign the consultant service agreement for phases one and two only um, for a total not to exceed fee of three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars, uh, only upon receipt of funding from Atherton Now in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And I believe that earlier this afternoon, the city manager, uh, also sent to all of you the letter received from Atherton Now uh, indicating their commitment of, of their, uh, participation, and the town should be receiving that by April first. And then also, by approving the recommendations, you will be directing the city manager to return to City Council for authorization of any future design phases upon receipt of sufficient funding from Atherton Now. And then the only other, uh, thing I wanted to note is Mr. Clive Meridoo from the CCA C is here this evening as well. And I don't know, did you want to say anything or?
Um, yeah. This was a very long process. Um, as some of the council members know, we, uh, we had proposals from fifteen or sixteen well-qualified firms. And over a period of many months, we narrowed that down to five firms that we thought were the best of the, uh, the firms. Um, we interviewed all those five. Um, from those five, we narrowed the choice down to three, um, subsequently down to two. The, um, City Council then met with those two firms. And I think it was fairly clear that they were both excellent firms. Both would have done a tremendous job. Uh, but on balance, we prefer WRNS Studio. Um, they've, um, they've, uh, come back to us many, many times with everything that we asked of them. They came back and, uh, produced more. So we asked what would happen now that we found out we have, um, a thirty-six inch water pipe binary through the site? What would, um, what thoughts did they have? They had a lot of thoughts. They came back with fully thought-through proposals, not necessarily ones that we will ultimately adopt, but it showed their willingness to work with us. So in terms of the, um, uh, the two team members from WRNS, uh, they, I think, are, um, gonna be exceptional in front of Atherton residents. That was one of our considerations. Which team would do best talking in, we know we're gonna have six, eight, ten meetings with Atherton residents? Who had the experience, who had the, um, uh, the ability to answer questions in a non-confrontational manner? We felt that, uh, WRNS had the, um, had the best approach for that. We liked the team that they have. You didn't meet all of the, the team members, council members, but their team, um, included, uh, people that we don't talk that much about, cost control experts. This is gonna be a cost-driven project. They have probably the best cost control experts in the country, certainly in the state, working for them. They have a fabulous police consultant who's worked on many, uh, police stations of the size that we're going to be working on. So when we looked at all of the, the factors, although it was a tough decision, WRNS was clearly head and shoulders above the other firms that we looked at. So good luck with the decision. Thank you.
Any questions? Members of the council?
No question for me.
Uh, is there any public comment on this matter? No public comment? Uh, bring it back to the council. Comments for members of the council, Bill?
Yeah, I just, uh, first off, I'm, I'm glad you're, we're kicking off this stage. And I echo your comments that, uh, when I looked at the proposals separately, they were my first choice and the other was the second choice. And, and then when we had the meeting, uh, I was not disappointed. You know, you showed a lot of energy in the meeting, so it looks like it's gonna be, uh, you know, an excellent choice and, um, and it's full steam ahead. Uh, there was a question, um, on the landscaping at one time, uh, and your team that you were gonna put on. Did you just wanna make a comment on that? Uh, you had a, you, you had a hole in your landscaping team? Yeah, okay, could they save?
Yeah.
Sure. Hi, I'm Pauline Suzil with WRNS. Uh, do you want me to?
Please.
Really honored to be here, so thank you very much. Uh, we had, uh, a great, uh, firm come before you, um, but because of work that they're doing with the city already, there was a request to look for another firm. And so after, um, proposing a few, we, uh, we had SWA participate in the last interview. Um, and they have done work, um, with us in, in other areas, um, also. And we feel really comfortable, and hopefully you all did too, with, uh, with how you saw their qualifications and how they participated in our, our, um, work, um, in, in our last interview.
Okay, so the whole team's full and they're all ready to go?
The whole team is full, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
I just wanted to take this opportunity because at the joint session where we were at, um, we're obviously not an easy town and we're very critical. And I do wanna say, and I know you guys aren't named partners, but one of the reasons why, I mean, it was the big picture. You guys really did come out and it, you know, it was like the Battle of the Titans. You were sitting there and with only the two of you, but it was the two of you that showed that you were gonna be willing to, to work with us. And, and I think that you really gained a lot of support by, you know, being out there, you know, against this mass. And so we really do appreciate it. We really are looking forward to moving forward. So, thank you. Thank you.
Any other comment?
Um, I just want to say that the, the first three, uh, phases, one, two, and three, the master plan confirmation, conceptual design, and schematic design, that does include, uh, some public outreach meetings. Because we're gonna be really going out to the town again and getting their input and, uh, it, we're gonna be under fire. Um, and we have to paint the vision. And, uh, I think that you're the right team to do that.
Well, I, I'll just say, my comment is I, I'm thrilled, uh, that we're gonna be working together. Uh, I've been involved in this process from the beginning at this stage of the process. And, uh, I think that, uh, you're a team that complements the town. And, um, I think that the part of our challenge over this next year, which is the year of design for this center, is going to be not just to reach out to the members of the, and residents of the town to convey to them the ideas that, uh, are coming to the top and, and that you believe are the right ideas, but to listen to them and to, uh, ask the right questions, to be able to extract from them the nuances that will make this center not just the largest project in the history of the town, which we know that it will be, but one that people will be really proud of. And, and I think that's a great deal of weight that rests not just on your shoulders, but on our shoulders. And, uh, we, by deciding to go forward with this project, have accepted that responsibility uh, and are really looking forward to it. I think this is, this is an opportunity for us to pull the town together in a way that I have never seen. And, uh, I don't know if my predecessors have seen it, but this is a huge undertaking by us. Uh, and, and I feel proud to be part of it, and I'm thrilled that you will be leading the effort.
So are you gonna entertain a motion?
I would love a motion.
So let me make a, a suggestion. It looks like there's potentially four motions in this because there's four areas.
You can move all of them all at the same time if you so desire.
Shall we do that?
Let's do that.
Okay, um, well, I would like to take the privilege of doing that because I've been working on this, I think, the longest of everyone here. And this is a very exciting moment for me, uh, to, uh, make the motion to request and accept the contributions from Atherton Now, the fundraising group, uh, for, uh, raising the funds to build this new town center in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars for the unfunded costs of phase one, which is the master plan confirmation, and phase two conceptual design of the design services for the Civic Center project. This is the share of the cost, not covered by the library and building department funding. And to award the contract to WRNS Studio LLP for design services for the Civic Center. And to direct the city attorney to prepare and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement for phase one and phase two in an amount not to exceed three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars upon receipt of the funding noted above from Atherton Now. And to direct the city manager to return to the City Council for authorization by Faze with WRNS Studio LLP pursuant to their proposal to the town for architectural services upon receipt of sufficient contributions from Atherton Now. Um, I have a quick question. Doesn't the schematic design also fall into this at this time?
Phase one, phase two, master plan, and, uh, schematic designer.
Conceptual designer.
Conceptual, schematic designer.
Schem- schematic design.
And I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Okay, we are moving on. The next item on the agenda.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for all your trips down here and for the gracious work. It's gonna be great.
So the next item on the agenda is the Holbrook Palmer, uh, Park Use Master Plan.
I was in the group just out. So it's just gonna go visible.
He knows he's so snotty, he would do that.
It doesn't have to be too much, it's good. There we go.
Excuse me, while we take a second to get our tech savvy, this, uh, rolling here. Like theater. Good evening, Mayor DeGolia, members of the council, and guests that are here to see our, our plan for, the master plan for Holbrook Palmer Park tonight. Like any good master plan, this one tells the story of the past, the present, and the future of the park. Uh, by future, we're talking about new and/or, uh, improved facilities at the park. This is about a forty-plus slide slideshow is, is what we came down to. And if possible, I wanted to ask that, uh, if, if it'd be possible to hold your questions till we're done so we don't get hung up on one slide and, and, and never move on. So we're gonna, we'll, we'll roll through this and we'll go back and take care of anything after the fact if that's, unless there's something you've totally gotta ask, that would be, that would be great. Um, the team of, of presenters for tonight are myself, uh, Mike Bellinger from, uh, BFF, uh, BFS Architects, uh, Bob Roser from the, he's the, uh, head of the Parking and Rec Committee, and George, uh, Roderick's our city manager. So we'll move right along here. This is our park.
Steve, you have to turn it off. Steve.
Turn it off.
All right, all right. You're right, the light's gotta be. This is our park. Uh, this is the park as, as, as it's known today or close to today. As you all know, there's probably a little bit of activity over there in that Little League ballpark section. The park was willed to the town in nineteen fifty by Olive Holbrook Palmer. It was accepted by the town in nineteen sixty-four. Since that time, things have sort of come in and just appeared at the park as, as need be, such as in the seventies, uh, late sixties, early seventies, we built a, a pavilion because we thought we needed a place to meet. There was tennis players that wanted tennis courts, so those were built. There was an arts, arts center that later turned into a play school. They were built in the, uh, late sixties and seventies. In the eighties, the thought was, let's add a really nice walking path out here. That would be nice. So a walking path and a park horse was added. In the nineties, uh, the Knox preschool was implemented and, and the buildings were expanded over there. In two thousands, we started playing Little League in the park. And so here we are today. Um, s- since that time, recently, we've done extensions to the path. We built pedestrian bridges, uh, fountains, uh, water tower. We're talking about, uh, building an event garden, and we've recently started a Little League project. But we really are doing this stuff kind of in a willy-nilly fashion, and it was time to put together a real, uh, good master plan as a way to move forward with things in the park. And I went too far. So I need to go here. Excuse me, I'm a little, okay.
I'll have to use you to step over and hit the back door.
Okay, um, this was, this is a picture of the two thousand and five schematic landscape master plan of the park. A lot of people said, what do we need a master plan for? We did one in two thousand and five. Well, this was a, uh, a picture of what the landscaping was to look like. But it really didn't tell the story about, uh, the other things that were gonna take place in the park, such as circulation, the uses in the park, what the facilities were used for. But it is a great plan for the landscape in the park, and that is gonna be used in conjunction with our lands, uh, with our park use master plan. Two thousand and thirteen, the City Council funded, uh, Park Master Plan Study. Some of the criteria we used for it was to build upon the existing two thousand and five master plan, not destroy it, but to work with it. Uh, to do a parks, uh, we did a park-wide site facility analysis to use, uh, community outreach, recreational trends, parking facility opportunities, parking demands, and fiscal considerations is, is part of coming up with this plan. And now I'm gonna go ahead and turn this over to Mike Bellinger, who's gonna talk a little bit about how this was done. All you gotta do is hit that button down one time and wait a second, or it'll go two slides.
Good evening. The master plan process was really laid out by the city in three phases. Uh, a look at the existing conditions, involvement with the community, and then developing the master plan concept. What we tried to do was really start part one and part two at the same time because it gave us an opportunity to really understand the park and get involved with the community. So we had, when we started, we understood that we were gonna be competing for the community's interest with the Civic Center Master Plan and the Bike Master Plan. So we took a four-part approach to getting community involvement. And the first was taking advantage of the city's, uh, email list, which allowed us to kind of get the word out that the master plan was starting. With that became the idea that we're gonna be sending out, uh, or offering a community survey via the city's website. And thirdly, um, was, um, having a park day. And we, we kind of rushed. And we, we kind of rushed that early into the process because we were coming into the fall, and we didn't know what the weather was gonna be like, so. But it turned out to be a great opportunity that day. And the fourth one was really working closely with the Parks Rec Committee as our task force to kind of guide and direct the, the community input that we received and our, our concepts. Uh, both the online survey and the park day was really successful for us. I mean, we got a hundred and thirty responses via our survey over a two-week period, which, you know, we knew we were gonna be challenged to get the community out to our public meetings, and really, that's, uh, in a lot of communities these days. But having that amount of, of survey reply was valuable for us. It was worth two or three public meetings. Uh, the park day was also a very spectacular day because we got, we approached people that were walking in the park. There was, uh, out, people out in the fields that day. There was a, uh, a dog walk day, wagon walk or something, bark in the park, which was a, a great, a great opportunity to get people involved in, uh, answering and talking to, about the park themselves. And what we heard from that day and from the survey, really, what kind of launched us into, uh, our, our master plan concepts was everybody was incredibly happy with the park. Uh, for all the respondents that we got from the surveys and meetings, uh, ninety per, ninety percent of the people lived within ten minutes of the park. And you'll kind of see how that fits with the community-wide recreation needs in a little bit. Um, everybody really liked what they had. They, they liked the informal nature of it, which was really another important question that we had. And one of the things that we started to get a little bit from people was that there's, there are some conflicts out here on the site, but really, people just loved to be able to see all the activities that were there. Uh, there was a lot of little things that people brought up. There's things that had been neglected over the years, the exercise stations, some of them had kind of start falling apart. Not everybody uses them, but everybody had their little interests. Uh, there was an idea of needing to fix the fountain up in front, you know, fixing some of the trails. People just noted these things on our boards there in Park Day or provided those comments in the survey, which are at the back of the master plan. You probably have a copy of that. But again, there was really no, uh, amazing new ideas there, except for in that first flush was the idea of an off-leash, uh, dog area. And you, you might think that that came from the Bark in the Park Day, but it really came through on the community survey also. So, the next thing that we wanted to get, uh, had the discussion with, with the Parks Recreation Committee was the character and the culture of the park. What was that like? So, Bob's gonna talk about that as part of our presentation today.
Just hit that center button one time and wait a second.
Mr. Mayor and town council members, uh, my first want to thank you, uh, on behalf of the Park and Rec Committee for the opportunity to participate in this project. It's an interesting one and a fun one, uh, to be involved in, so, uh, thank you very much. I'm gonna start with the, uh, site analysis and the, uh, character of the plant. And I'm gonna give you a few pictures of things I'm sure you've seen many times, just to reinforce. That's one of my favorite ones, sitting on that bench. The picnic area. And the area just to the left of the children's, um, playground. I don't think there's any, uh, question that you could take about fifty more pictures and really, you know, see what we've got. It, it is no question a special place, just no doubt about it. Um, in terms of some recreation, uh, I was told this looks a little different now, but, but, uh, the ballpark is gonna be really something as you're, watch the constructions going on out there. And I now understand that the, that the, uh, field is gonna be pretty amazing, uh, with what they're, what they're doing to, to put in that sod. I think the, the thing about, uh, the areas that we have, uh, they're so flexible and they are available to people who do everything from, you know, throwing a frisbee, to playing soccer, to playing lacrosse, to, um, walking, sitting, exercising. I mean, there's really something for everyone in the park. And it's large enough that you feel like you're out there by yourself. And I think that's a, a really special thing, all in terms of recreation opportunity. Quick look at facilities. I'm pretty familiar with, uh, the carriage house and the main house. Gilmore. And the things about these houses is that you can hold about any type of event or meeting or whatever you wanna do. You can pick the location. There's also the Jennings Pavilion and the Play School was one of the buildings also. But you can take one of the buildings and pretty much it'll suit whatever you're trying to do. Event or trying to hold something, hold a meeting or whatever. And I think that's another unique thing about having a different building. Sometimes they say, well, like a different building here, we need to do more to this one. Sure, we do. We have to improve everything in the park. It's kind of our challenge. But it really, it fits well. Large weddings, whatever, whatever you wanna do, it's really, it's really great. Another item to come up is parking. And I think we came out with the feeling that the parking is adequate, and you can see from this slide, there's no problem parking. There was nothing going on in the park that day, but there was.
Well, it depends upon when you took that picture.
Of course, of course. The times we run into parking activities when everything's going on at the same time. And, um, it's been managed, uh, pretty well of late. Um, you know, you can have, uh, we haven't had the baseball and, recently, and weddings and everything going on. But now, um, if there is conflicts, then the group is required to do volley parking. Okay, which takes a tremendous amount of, of pressure off of the, everybody trying to jam into a parking lot. And they know that, of course, before they do, do the event. And so, I think that's helped things a lot. The other thing that people have to be willing to do is to walk. So, if you wanna get down to tennis and, and baseball, Little League baseball, you might have to park up by the, the, uh, North Meadow. You know, there's a couple of parking lots there, but you'd have to walk down there. I mean, how far is it? But it's amazing how people will go down and wait for a parking place. But it doesn't mean there isn't parking. It means they wanna park close. So, if there's parking available, I consider that to be adequate, uh, parking. Uh, this is a shot where we blocked off that road that, that, that's in front, uh, there. And at some point, we probably want to, uh, to look at, uh, not needing that road, um, at all. Okay, the, the other thing I wanted to do is go through the, um, facilities and features and just, uh, kind of where we are on each one. Um, the first one, the main house and patio, um, it's considered to be in pretty good condition. Um, there is some, always some upgrade. There's always painting and stuff, maintenance kind of stuff, not really, you know, master planning kinds of stuff. And of course, the event garden is finally moving along, uh, pretty well, and I think that's gonna add another, uh, nice feature, uh, to the park. The, uh, and, and one of the things we looked at is, what would you need to do to any of the, uh, facilities to make it, um, better for people who would be looking to rent it or, or utilize it? And the Jennings Pavilion is at the kitchen, uh, is one of the weaknesses of using that building. And being able to do something there, I think, would attract more people to wanna, to hold their event there. Uh, carriage house, as, as you know, the, the, um, friends of the park are, uh, looking at, uh, a renovation of that. And, and that's in the, I would say, it's in the planning stages. Uh, preschool i- is one that we talked about a lot as we went through this, uh, uh, master plan and, uh, felt that, uh, moving it to, uh, close to the Gilmore House area would help the driving in and dropping people off and going back out. And also, the buildings are, uh, quite old and, uh, are needing a replacement, and will have to be replaced in some short time period. So, if you were gonna, uh, put new buildings in, I think putting them in a better location, uh, makes a lot of sense, and that's one of the, the, uh, recommendations. The tennis courts, um, since we got the contract with the, uh, Player Capital, the, a number of lessons has gone up dramatically. Uh, and we're getting some income from it, which is, which is, uh, nice also. And the other interesting thing is, um, arguments have disappeared. And, and that's, that's really interesting. You say, why does that happen? Well, it happens because, uh, Mike, uh, Mike and his team are facilitators. So, they, they don't, if somebody has a court problem, they don't go into an argument with it. They figure out how they can fix it. And their attitude is very positive, and that's, that's, that's really, really great to see. And they have a lot of summer camps planned, which will be, uh, even more, uh, people, uh, especially kids playing tennis. He has quite a number of, of young players. Some of them are amazingly good. Let's see, where am I here? Well, a Little League field speaks for itself on, on how that's, uh, gonna get changed and improved. Um, the playground, uh, it was pretty much felt that the, uh, two-to-five-year-olds, it's a good playground, but it's a little unchallenging and, and not as good for some of the older, uh, young children. And we think that that's, that's an area that we, we could look at at some point and see if there's something we can do there to, to attract and have something from, for that age group. Picnic area is pretty much, uh, up, updating things. Um, did a few things on the north lawn. Uh, these things are in pretty good shape. It's more of a, a keeping them up and, and doing a little improvement. And the, the last thing, the, the gardens, I think, although it's last on this, this slide, is, is really, really important to the whole vision and feel of the park. And, uh, I think, uh, Stephen and his, uh, team made some real progress in the last year in getting out some of the things that needed to be taken out, putting in some better things, fixing the water system, uh, in the park. And so, we've made a lot of progress here, but it's one we have to keep focused on because that's the one that degrades. And then it, it makes the park look, uh, not as good as it, as it, as it should. I have, uh, one last thing I'd like to talk about, and that is, I wanna take this opportunity to thank the Park and Rec Committee for all the work they put into the numerous revisions of this. It was, uh, we had a lot of fun with it and a lot of discussion with it. And, uh, I wanted to recognize and thank, uh, Sandy Crittenen, Mary Lou Gardner, William Hoy, Frank Merrill, Robert Oyster, and Mary Lou Thompson. And I really thank them for their dedication and passion about our park. Thank you.
Before I leave the, the kind of site analysis for it, I just wanna summarize a couple of things. It was really going through and talking about the small things. Uh, walking is very important to the community, and so, we talked about how to take walks off the street, off the roadway, off the driveway, and create new walk connections. That whole safety issue came about also with the, the Play School, where that was one of the conflicts that was identified in several instances where there's really no great loading and unloading zone there. And there's a lot of people turning around, so we talked about turnarounds at the end of parking lot. But then the opportunity came, well, we've got this huge parking lot at the entrance to the park. We've got some open space up in that area. Maybe that's an opportunity. So, I wanna reinforce what Bob said. Um, it was the committee that really brought and encouraged some conversation. Took us a little while to kind of get in through some of the major discussion pieces, but the, the committee was really great about that. The other part that, uh, the city asked us to take a look at is, how does Atherton satisfy the recreation needs for the community? And so, we took, took a, a kind of a top-level look at it. And from a national perspective, the National Parks and Recreation Association looks to communities to provide about two acres per thousand people in, in their communities. The state of California has a three acre per thousand. Those are really kind of loosely interpreted. Uh, it could include golf courses, and it could include open space. It could include sports complex. So, when we looked to try to bring that down to the local level, we looked at Memo Park and Palo Alto as a good comparison, pulled out all the major open space, all the majors, you know, structured facilities. And what we found is that Atherton with three point three acres per thousand really did a pretty good job of satisfying that. And I think that's reflected in the community's, uh, satisfaction with the park. Now, from a accessibility perspective, um, you try to get parks within a fifteen or twenty-minute walk of, of everybody's home. Well, that isn't necessarily satisfied through Holbrook Palmer, but as you could see, there's a variety of parks and, um, and, uh, and schools that are around that, that help satisfy that. This diagram was really started to take a look at how, uh, the Little League programs, how the sports fields programs are satisfied. And, uh, but you could see that, you know, within a ten-minute, uh, within a ten-minute drive, you're easily satisfied, you know, the community residents. So, for, for a perspective of, say, the sports fields, uh, the, the city, the leagues that are here in the community do a great job of collaborating with the surrounding communities. There doesn't seem to be any, uh, conflict at this point in time. Uh, all this, all the soccer league, the lacrosse group, the Little League, everybody responded and just talked about the fact how, you know, yeah, they like the fields a little bit more often, but they, they really work well together. You know, from a standpoint of other things like picnic tables, tennis courts, uh, playgrounds, uh, the city more than satisfies those needs. But again, as some of, a lot of the things that people pointed out, they just need a little bit more maintenance. You know, clean up the tables a little bit more often, repair those paths. But the committee wasn't really that, uh, anxious to talk about any other new kinds of things. You know, typically, we'll hear, oh, we wanna see volleyball courts, or, you know, where's the skate park? Where's the bike park? We really never heard that from the community. Uh, we got, through the survey, uh, the young, you know, seventeen and under, the sixty-plus, there was a pretty good balance in there. There was not that many requests, and, and I gotta think that it's because people have access to lots of other recreation facilities in the area. So, they don't seem to feel the need to bring that into Holbrook Palmer. So, from that perspective, uh, there weren't a lot of any new uses except for the off-leash dog area. And, um, that is something that, well, one of the other things that we didn't talk, we talked about a little bit, and that is, uh, programs. Does the city need to provide those programs? And we never heard that out of the survey, but the city does provide those facilities. The, the pavilion, I mean, the park itself has got some great outdoor spaces, uh, but there's the main house, there's the pavilion, and the, the discussion about, you know, increasing the uses of the carriage house bring lots of great opportunities for all those programs. Uh, in the park master plan, you'll see, uh, opportunity for environmental education in terms of the rainwater gardens and all those kinds of things. But, but we'll, uh, we'll get to that in the, later in the presentation. But from a recreation perspective, uh, the community feels very satisfied. At least regionally, those things are satisfied. Now, on to the master plan recommendations.
What you're seeing up here is, is a pretty, pretty big part of this plan, and that's the conceptual master plan that we've, uh, been working on for the last couple of years. You'll see, I'll go to this one, the, I guess it does more down there. We've got a, uh, we're showing the new, uh, Little League, uh, field in here with the, with the permanent bleachers. Um, we've got the new path that's already put into the Felton Gables Gate incorporated in here. We're looking at an area that, if you look at the two thousand and five schematic landscape plan, it shows an amphitheater. We combine that with a rain garden, which is a new stormwater requirement for, this, this is the lowest part in the park. So, what you do is you combine those two things. In the winter, it's a swamp, but in the summer, you can use it for an amphitheater setting or, or whatever. And it, it's a multi-purpose amenity. If, if it was decided to put a, a off-leash dog area, uh, exclusive off-leash dog area, there's multi, multiple ways you could do off-leash dog. If, if it was decided to put a, a off-leash dog area, exclusive off-leash dog area, there's multi, multiple ways you can do off-leash dog areas. I live in the city of San Mateo and one of the ways that they do it in a couple of parks is they say you can have your dogs off-leash between seven AM and nine AM. Yeah, and then the rest of the day, you, you've got to be leashed. But if we decided to do an exclusive area, we looked at a couple of different spots in the park and this was the preferred area to do it. Basically, if you know this area at the end of the parking lot, it's just trees and fairground. Of course, that would probably be done up with something like decomposed gray. There would be some features in there for the dogs' likes and picnic tables, the fences and the gates to go in and out, but this would be, this would be, this would be the rough area where, where it would be preferred. You can see the little camera-headed turnaround parking area. That's where you can come in one way, back into it the other way and go around to the decks of the park. There is, the event garden is shown in here. We've also shown the carriage house with the play school removed and moved over to an area next to the Gilmore House. Once again, i- i- if you were gonna take the opportunity of having to replace these buildings, the thought was this would be a great place to replace it. A lot of the people in the park would only need to come in, drop off their kids and go around without having to drive through the entire park to do it. Cuts down, it, it improves the safety in the rest of the park, cuts down a lot of the traffic going through the park. So just an idea of, of how it could be done. If you look at this area, it's now a road that comes in here through the main house. We've cut that down to just a pedestrian path. And if, the pedestrian paths are intermingled and, and made up now, so you don't have to walk down the streets anymore to get anywhere in the park. You can take a path to get anywhere. I believe there's a street crossing here and a street crossing here would be the only two crosswalks. There, there's an opportunity to move the carriage house to a different locate, I'm sorry, the courtyard to a different, I'm gonna move carriage house. Courtyard to, thanks for that, to, to a new location. So, so those are some of the things we're looking at. Once again, this is a master plan. And these are ideas that have been, you know, gone through and gone through. None of these have to be done with the acceptance of this plan. With this, the acceptance of this plan will, will say, yeah, this is a good footwork to go off, such as with the dog park or the off-leash dog area. Hey, let's study it. Let's look and see what can be done. Does it have to be this size? Does it have to be this shape? Not necessarily, but probably in that area would be the best to put it. And that goes for most of the features here on the park. So with that, I'm gonna turn this over to George.
Am I betting last?
You're betting last. You take, take it to the end.
Okay, so lucky with the money.
In and out of the park.
In and out of the park. Good, that's a park. That's good. So.
You're too far away.
I'm not too far away.
It says fifty B.
You're up on the screen there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Flip the top switch, the middle switch down because you're on pointer now.
Oh, you turned it to pointer. Thanks.
Yeah, you were, you were on the pointer and you were down.
There we go. Okay, so this is page forty-six of your Park Master Plan.
Cause I can't read that there.
Cause that's rather small. You're correct. And this is the money part of things and it breaks down all of those wonderful ideas that Steve talked about and add some dollars to that.
It's not page forty-six.
It's not page forty-six?
Yeah, it's page forty-six on the left.
No, just.
Page fifty-five.
No.
Fifty-five.
Just forty-six is fine. That's why I've broken the line.
Just got us all the same thing.
Anyway, it's in the back there. It's what you read it, right?
It's in the back. Anyways, we're gonna blow up every single section.
I don't, I don't have them.
Please, we're good.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
Forty-six on the left and fifty-five on the right.
We, we blew it up on the screen here for you. This is the first one, the main house and patio. As Steve mentioned, he already walked you through what some of those improvements might be. For this particular one, there is nothing on the priority schedule, the five-year priority schedule that the Park and Rec Committee identified as something to have tackled in the next five years. Next up was the Jennings Pavilion. This is where Bob did talk about some things that wanted to be done. The Park and Rec Committee talked about, want it to be done in the next five years. Here was the update to the kitchen. The council already authorized a $50,000 allotment to put in a catering kitchen. So you've already tackled that particular item. Constructing a trash enclosure is something that Steve's gonna have to tackle as he addresses the rose garden. So that'll be something done operationally in the next budget cycle. But again, that's not part of the five-year implementation opportunities that the Park and Rec Committee identified. The carriage house, as Bob mentioned, the friends of the park are looking at doing something with the carriage house. That's an idea that's gotta come back to the council. We've fully vetted out. That's why you've got a TBD in that column there for improvements. It's not part of what the Park Use Master Plan has identified. Here we have the preschool. The Park and Rec Committee did identify that we should do the studies to move the preschool from its, from its existing location to its proposed location. And that was over near the Gilmore House. And that cost about $15,000 to do that study. Vehicle circulation and parking, they identified, I'm gonna summarize those dollars at the very end of, of this. I'm just identifying the ones that were called out in the five-year plan. VC one, VC one is doing the barrier posts and abandoned asphalt. That's the road that Steve talked about coming in from the very beginning, modifying that approach into the park and beautifying that particular section. VC two is creating a turnaround at the pavilion parking lot. And I think there's a picture of that there.
Nothing. We gloss over real quick. Another real important that, that VC one is putting an official entrance for walkers to come in to the park. Right now, you have to walk through a driveway with all the cars, so actually have it a walking path there.
Yeah, very good thing. You see a small number there, directional signage on the park and the roadway, remove, refinish, install. We encountered waypoint signage issues in the park when we had the, the meeting on Monday night. New people that come to Holbrook Palmer Park don't know where the pavilion is. So if there is some waypoint signage for walkers and drivers in that tells them where to park and where to go, that would be helpful. There's not a lot of cost involved in that one. That's probably something we can put into an operational budget moving forward. I think this is pedestrian circulation. Here's where some of your big numbers begin to accumulate. This is both part of the Park and Rec Committee's five-year implementation recommendation to construct various pathway lengths and do some sight lighting. Tolding those together, it's about $296,000. That is part of the five-year implementation schedule the Park and Rec is recommending. And those are throughout the park. Park features, you see the off-leash dog area with about 20,000 square feet, includes the fencing, the granite and the fire hydrant that Steve mentioned. That's about $250,000. The design of that is all that Park and Rec, the fire hydrant is very expensive. You've got water, you've got all that stuff. But they're not recommending that we actually implement the off-leash dog area this time. What the recommendation is, is that we do the design of the off-leash dog area, keep that on the shelf. And if the council decides to make that a priority, we could put it into the park. Again, that's a policy call for the council.
That bid, George, that bid this in high.
Or they could be inexpensive as you want them also. It depends on how you design.
It could be more expensive?
It could be more.
Or it can be less. But with dog areas, it's more appropriate. We can identify an area, but yet not do the design because as things change, designs will change as things change. I just heard this morning that synthetic grass, certain things, rubber, detersions. So why would we design a something, spend 20 grand on something and yet not do it? No.
Right.
I'm sorry, I'm just.
Plus, plus there's, you know, at any one point in time, you know, if you go out and look at when the, the off-leash dogs are out there, which is generally in the morning, you know, there's, some people are never gonna have their dogs on. Some people are gonna have their dogs always on leash and some aren't and some are so. Of all the dogs that go to the park, they're all not gonna be in that area. And so I, I think really, by my counts, when I'm there in the morning, there might be ten to 12 dogs there in that, in that area. And it's very substantial for thirty, you know, for almost $300,000 for the whole thing for, for 12 dogs.
I, I agree.
Yeah, but that's a policy call for the council.
We're not having to.
So then we have planting and irrigation. The one that the Park and Rec Committee recommended we pursue within the next five years is renovate several plantings in various locations around the park, about 63,000 square feet. That's PL two. That's the big dollar number, 190,200. Here's the second phase of the relocation studies. That's relocating the massively ugly and massively large courtyard building at the park into a much better, well-refined location, a little bit smaller, organized a lot better. And reclaim some of that open space in the park that we, we lost because of that building. That's a $10,000 price tag. Does it do anything with the well? The well?
The well. The well would, we, we could always abandon that well and then drill another one in the new location or leave the well where it is, you know, with kind of a standalone building around it or whatever.
So this is, this is the new finance report that goes to the Park and Rec Committee. And I know it's really small on the screen, but it is page forty-five of the master plan and fifty-four of your package.
I got it.
You got it. Perfect.
Yeah, I'm, I'm on your page.
Perfect. So I just wanted to point out a few things. This is from January of 2015. And we've added a column on the right-hand side that says, okay, where are we as of January 2015? We're at 58% of the budget year. Where are we with each of the revenues and expenditures within the park for all of its programs and activities? The number I like at the bottom tells you how much it costs to spend or how much it costs in the park and what the revenues are for the park and what we're doing in terms of cost recovery. So along the bottom, you've got in 2013, 14, we recovered about 53%, 54% of what it costs to operate and program that park. I think as we go forward, tennis comes online, a few other activities come online and things start heating up with rentals at the park, that number could be significantly higher.
Well, so far this year, we've recovered 75%.
Exactly.
And we have four more months to go.
Right. We're doing quite well.
When we don't adjust it seasonally, it can be quite misleading though, right?
That's true.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
So the, the ones that Park and Rec has recommended over the next five-year period of time is the implementation priorities, planting renovation, pedestrian circulation, park lighting. I've highlighted some of these as we went along in detail. So here's what that list looks like with dollars attached to it. So PL two, planting renovation, 190, VC one, VC one, 230. And I'm not gonna read the slide. You, you can read them. That's 583,200. What we're looking for the council to do this evening is review and accept the Park Master Plan, but provide some feedback on which of these you want to do when over the next five years. But I think Park and Rec is looking for, for some of the bigger numbers is, that aren't specific project improvements. Are, you know, give some money into the town's operational budget so they can allocate planting and renovation and things on an annual basis to maintain the park at a higher level than, than the past. So that $190,000 might break down into a $50,000 budget allocation each year going into the park for planting renovation and improvements. But the pedestrian circulation numbers might be one big ticket item. We might do next fiscal year or the year after that. The two studies can be done relatively easily. The turnaround is a single project allocation within the capital improvement plan. And the off-leash dog design, again, that's a policy issue. You may put it in year one, you may put it in year five, you may say, I don't want to see it at all. And that, I think, concludes our presentation.
That concludes it.
Bob, you want to put it further comments?
In the survey, there were 30 people that mentioned they wanted a dog park.
Thirty, out of 130 respondents.
Out of 137, I think it was, 30 people said dog park was important.
Right.
That's all.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council.
Are there any questions?
Um, I got a question. Uh, when I was going through, I guess, the parking and at the end of the day, the parking charts, uh, the parking is adequate, but when you added up the numbers, which by the way, didn't include the carriage house, which does have functions. It's got like, for example, on Sunday, it has quite a number of people there, but during the week, they occasionally have sessions there. It looked like perhaps we were a little short on parking. So I guess, and, and as, as you know, anybody who's been there in the, when there is Little League going on, currently there's not the problem, but at the game change time and the same thing with the soccer, with the, with the drop off and pick up time, it's very, very congested. And so it might prove us to consider, I thought, for some more parking spaces. But could you explain, was that considered or, or do you think that that's prudent or, or just there wasn't space?
Funny you should mention that because parking was one of the most contentious, contentious items of discussion as we went through the master plan process, both with public comment and amongst the Park and Recreation Committee itself. If you look at the actual master plan, it discusses the parking needs in the park. There's, there's a section on that. I'm not quite sure of the page number on that.
Page 21.
Page 21 of the master plan itself. And it does show that we are under the numbers that we should have for parking. However, it also acknowledges that the way we deal with that right now and the reason that most of the time, or all the time, as far as I know, I, I get the complaints in the park. And besides one complaint a number of years ago that they couldn't find parking in the park, how, how do we have all these events and, and still be able to park in the park? And I think the simple answer to that is we manage the parking there. We make sure that if there's a wedding for 200 in the pavilion, we're not renting out the carriage house at the same time and, you know, and if, and if there is a 200-person wedding, parking there at the same time a Little League game's going on. First of all, we let them know that. And second of all, we make them do valet parking that day. And we tell them you can have this many parking spots over that. They have to be valeted off, off the area. So we actively manage every event that's in that park.
But Steve, in the, in the presentation, and I, I'm sorry, I have to just, I think I'll tell you what page it's on.
It's page 22.
Page 22, okay. The one I read page 22, maybe I'm misreading it. Says today we have 184 spaces and this is kind of how they're allocated out based on the events that are going on periodically there. Doesn't have the carriage house in there, I'll point it out. Then you say we're gonna be adding new things such as the event garden. We're gonna be, if, if we're gonna do the facelift to the carriage house, which you know, is, is a ways off. They're gonna be having more activities, so they're gonna be required. And we bring in off-leash dog park, more people will come and use the park. And it says we need an additional 60. And so if we have 184 now, which, you know, maybe it is, where are the extra 60 coming from?
Turn that off. Unfortunately, I would like to show you the conceptual picture on the master plan because if you look.
But that assumes that everything is happening at the same time.
Right. Once again, that assumes everything that's happening at the same time. But if you look at the conceptual, the section of the master plan, should that carriage house be improved, one of the opportunities is if, if the play schools move, we'll have an area that we can have for parking next to it.
It says potential future parking of the 20 spaces.
But the key thing is that that 184 spaces that's on page 22 assumes that you're having an event in the pavilion at the same time that you're having an event at the main house at the same time that there's lacrosse practice and that we're having baseball.
Yeah.
But you would can't.
So that never happens at the same time.
But there is potential future parking spaces here.
It's only 20.
In the future, if, if some of these things happen, which is unknown right now, so we can't call them, you know, sure things, but you have some potential future parking areas.
Well, you have 42 now. It says on page 21, there's 142 spaces now. All I'm saying is, was there any real discussion by the Parks and Rec group to say, maybe we should think about where we're gonna put some extra spaces? And you said maybe next to the carriage house. Okay, I, I appreciate that.
The idea of the master plan.
Yeah, but it just seemed that, you know, as we get more people in the park, we might need to have some spaces allocated for potential, maybe use some of the dogs' park place. I don't, I don't know, but maybe we allocate some space for some additional park. Parking will always be a problem.
I, I just want to echo a little bit what Councilman Whitmer is mentioning is, this is a master plan. It's, for example, just like the dog park, this may not happen, but yet with everything and all of our numbers going in the positive direction that this is gonna be attractive, we can only defer off so much. And yes, an anomaly, everybody's on the park the same day. The reality is it's still parking-related issues. So did we consider parking? Why is there no considerations of parking in the conceptual plan within this? That's the question. Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So if I could, let me just jump in here.
I was just saying, one of the challenges you have is that as you put more and more parking inside the park, like let's, let's drive all the way to the back of the park and put more parking in, so the proposal is down by the tennis courts or over by the carriage house. Alls you do is get, you know, more congestion inside the park and make it less of a rural park.
But in the same sense, I apologize and I'm not gonna, I'm not meant to interrupt. But if we were considering an option between a dog park or parking for residents to park, we all might consider that the parking is more important than 30 dogs. So I think that's why the option for us in a futuristic concept of a master plan is that option's not even in the consideration mode here. We see it in numbers, but we don't see where we would consider it. And frankly, I think that'd be probably pretty good.
So just to follow through a step is, what we, there was some concern at, at a very limited number of times that there is not enough parking. But in talking to the police chief, they really don't get that many calls about it. So there's times when it just appears like it's full, just that people really want to park right here as opposed to parking that's elsewhere. as opposed to parking that's elsewhere to park. So, we, so Steve asked us to look at what, if you were to, if you were to start this park from scratch and program out what those, all those uses were, that's where we came up with a hundred and eighty-four spaces, which said, okay, yeah, there's some potential issue with parking. But not everything happens at the same time. And I think that's what Steve was alluding to in terms of how they manage the site. You don't get soccer and lacrosse and Little League and everything going on at the same time. Schools, not necessarily. So, so we said, okay, it's been managed fairly well. So we're looking at opportunities to provide some parking. So we looked at this area here, we could get up to twenty spaces. We talked about additional parking in this area. There was a lot of discussion with the Parks Committee. And there was, there was concern that it was becoming too developed in that, at that part of the park. So we could definitely add those sketches into the master plan for the future consideration. But from the standpoint of how it came through the committee, they really would like to keep this a little bit more softer park. So we identified some additional parking that could happen in this area, but we could put in yet.
I agree. I think that just in a, just in the concept of design, we don't see it, we don't know. We're, our bodies will change, everybody's gonna change.
Right.
If we knew you guys had these conversations, if these were discussions, we don't get that here. I mean, we understand you guys want parking, but when we have to make a decision related to a parking problem that may occur five years from now, we'd really like to know that you guys have considered where our potential best spot location is, without having to try to find you guys and say, hey, did you guys hack this out five years ago? The reality is, it doesn't give us that option in this concept, so adding it would be.
We could do that.
Helpful to us.
Certainly.
So, so the other question, which I was surprised to see in the recommendation, um, there was a lot of, um, what's, I guess, in the, in the survey that you presented, eighty percent of the people that come to the park do, use the walking trail. Um, yet that, upgrading that walking trail and improving it, I know that we, we did kind of a quick surface coat to it, while all the parts of it in the back are still digging up and need to continue to be managed, but, you know, maybe changing that out, there has been discussions about tearing it up and, and re-putting it in, but it didn't seem to even get on the, the, the.
It's, it's on there.
No, you said, those were circulation, those were the front circulations and the cut-in. It wasn't redoing it. As I read, it didn't say the whole area. So, uh, now, if, if that's what you've been, if that's what you would, uh, had implied, that wasn't clear, because when I read your circulation, it was the new front area where the old fire access was, the entrance to the park that you talked to, et cetera. Those areas, we were gonna put down the decomposed granite and those extra cut-throughs. And that, that sounded about right for the number that you had up there.
So, uh, in our, in our, under pedestrian circulation, we had construct, repair, various path links. So we had, we had a quantification of what that was.
And it, you know, I, well, I'm, I sit on the Park and Rec Committee, and this was absolutely part of the pedestrian circulation one, where it says, the park's walking paths are one of the most valued amenities in Upper Palmer Park. Some segments require minimal planning and can be implemented incrementally. That's addressing the current, uh, you know, circulation path that goes all the way around the park. So, that was a key part of the discussion, and that's part of the proposal of what's a priority.
And I could include the diagram of the repair sections and the new sections in this report.
We never said we were gonna replace all of them.
Well, it's been discussion that's been here.
So I mean, in, in the master plan, we never came to the conclusion we'd replace all of them. Instead, we repair and then additional places to get people off of the car, roads, on the road.
Okay, well, I look at the square footage, in, in a square mile, and the path around the, the park is, is about one point four miles. And there's twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight four dot four hundred square feet. And so you're only gonna do twenty-two thousand, so that's, you know, you're not doing a very big piece. And I, I contend that maybe it's that new area when you add it all up, but if you make a commitment and the, I'd like to see a more commitment what we're gonna do there.
Take another look at it.
Yeah.
So, the, the, obviously, parking's a hot potato. Uh, on one hand, uh, the primary mode of transportation from the survey showed that fifty-one percent of the park users walk. Uh, twenty-two percent ride their bike. So fifty-one plus twenty-two is seventy-three, so seventy-three percent, uh, seem to not use a car. And, um, you know, my desire is to get more people to not drive their cars and to ride their bike or walk or come. But a lot of people don't live close enough to walk, you know. There are, uh, a lot of residents who are fortunate to be able to walk. Um, but, you know, we have to accommodate, like, our counselor right here, he's, he's, uh, geographically desirable to the park. Um, and, but, we don't want to just asphalt pave over our, um, our park either and just add lots and lots of parking spaces to accommodate the additional uses. Uh, if the carriage house is renovated and, uh, uh, there are events that, um, bring in an additional fifty-plus people, uh, and they're all in cars, you know, we could have a problem. And, um, not, planning for that in a reasonable way would be foolish of us to, uh, not be able to say that this could be a problem when everything is happening, because there's, the more events you have at the park, the more likely they're gonna happen at the same time, right? I mean, it's just the law of averages. Uh, if you only have three uses in the park, then, you know, you're probably not gonna have them all happen at the same time. But I'd like to just table that for a second, 'cause my real comment is, and, and maybe it's, it's, it's identified, uh, in this, uh, schedule of the financial, this is supposed to be a park use master plan, so what are the top ten uses that we have in the park? And how are they? Are they competing with each other? Are they complementary? How likely is it that we're going to have, uh, two or three or five or ten happening all at once that would clog up the park? Um, so I think that's, I see this, I'm very excited about all the work that has been done. I love planting and redesigning and making things better, you know. So I see that, uh, this plan is more of a, a site plan, you know, a design, a site, a better site plan of circulation and restoration and, and even maintenance, you know, addressing our deferred maintenance, uh, that we've had in the park over the years. Rather than, uh, looking at what are the uses that are coming to the park? How are they using it? What's the, um, level of use that each use is needing? And is it complementary, uh, or, or conflicting? Or are there other uses that, now I heard that, that you surveyed, nobody said, well, you know, you didn't have a cry-out for a skateboard park or something like that, which I'm really happy about. So, can, can we kind of just ask that, answer that question?
Well, I, obviously, everyone knows there's an infinite amount of space in the park, and.
There's a finite amount of space.
A finite.
Sorry, there's a finite amount of space, yes.
We have, we have twenty-two acres there. About five of it's grass, you know. There's a little bit of roads and whatnot. If, if, uh, it was the Park and Rec Committee's feeling, and I'll, I'll paraphrase, Bob, you can tell me if I'm wrong, that it was better to try to manage the parking that was there in the same means that we're doing now, being, any of the changes, uh, that might increase the parking are not gonna be that large. It's better to manage it than to just build a bunch of parking in case people come. And, you know, the, the thought was, and like I said, there was, it was a lot of very contentious discussion about it, that, that, you know, that was the best way to go about it, and that's how we moved for, the, the committee moved forward out of that, was, well, let's have a plan. I mean, the, the biggest thing that they saw, the, the two biggest things were the addition of the carriage house and the, and the possible addition of an off-leash dog area that could really bolster people coming to parks. If any of you go to off-leash dog areas, people come from all over to go to them. Um, you'll get people from Redwood City, unincorporated Samhain County, Mendel Park coming to your off, off-leash dog area. They like their dogs to meet other dogs and all those things. So, and you get the five o'clock crowd, and you get the six o'clock crowd, you can really bring in a lot of people. So, if that was to happen, that fell along this parking area right here, because it was pretty close to where it would be.
The other, the other problem I have with off-leash dog, I mean, what about Fulton Gables? Will they just, you know, the residents, the noise and everything?
Many of the dogs are from.
We're gonna post signs in those parks.
That, that, that was brought up in the original concept of dog park was over here.
That's next.
And the thought was, you know, the reason, one of the reasons for that was, if you had it here, you're really close to these fences.
Obviously.
And dogs aren't. But it was, it was actually at, at this council meeting, they said, that this council said, that we like this spot the best, even though the dogs are barking.
Well, with, with, with regards to the dog area, you know, Steve, I, you know, I would just say that, that's, that's a lot of space for the dogs. I don't know how many, you know, we should probably do a count and, and just, and then properly size it. Possibly you could shrink it down, maybe. Uh, but then the other thing is, is, and, and, but then you could reserve that. If we needed more parking, fine, another idea we could have is to have, you know, these rental bikes that are over here. You put a credit card in to make sure that the bike comes back, but, you know, like they have in the major cities, and people can park here and bike over to the park and et cetera. So, I mean, there's other ways to get around parking, so I'm not saying the parking is bad, but, but I think that there's a, 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 a nice trade-off between the space that's there, and maybe, maybe we need it for parking, maybe we don't, you know, to the vice mayor's position. You know, the uses is that we allocate some space for potential uses, as opposed to.
The best thing I can say is, I know our architect brought in four different plans for expanded parking in the park, and all of them, all of them kind of fell through, and, and they thought that the managed parking was the best way to go here, so. We can include those?
We've been in a process of questions, of clarification, which were well beyond that. I want to see if there's any public comment, uh, that anyone wants to make to this, because that has a right to go forward. There's comment.
I would just say that, you know, maybe cutting the dog run area in half is, is something that, you know, if there was a need. But since doing the dog park area seemed to be the lowest priority, it seems like sort of getting hung up on it right now is, you know, not very productive. Um, I must say, my experience with the dog park area was that there are people from all over, and I went to the One Year Shoreline, and they have it divided for big dogs and little dogs. And my little dog was, you know, escaped with a leash, and this pit bull was jumping up my back trying to get my little dog, who I had a harness, you know, thing on, so I could raise it up and protect her. And then the owner of the pit bull was criticizing me for having left the leash on, which was an incitement, you know. So anyway, and another lady approached me and said that she had actually lost her dog. She had a companion small dog when an untended pit bull ran out from the driveway and ate her dog, you know. So, you know, so, you know, I, I, if we have the dog park as a low priority down the line, I think that's fine with me, and I think you could certainly, you know, you, I mean, let's be real. People let their dogs off the leash all the time. There's not that many places in the park, and right now, there's not that many people in the park, that we have an issue with kids getting bit and all that, you know. And people are pretty good to their dogs. So, if we have a designated area, we are going to pull in a lot of people from other communities, and, um, you know, maybe that's not such a smart thing. Thanks.
Is there any other public comment?
Can I just say, you've never answered my question, the top ten uses.
Yeah, Bob, you want to add something?
Um, there's two things there. One is, um, we can't predict how much growth we're gonna get in certain areas. So, if we needed more parking, what are the options that make sense? Uh, there's nothing wrong with doing that. We did some of that. I don't think it was presented in a way you could see that it was done, but nothing wrong with that. The other thing is the conflict thing between the different activities. Some of that was done to determine about the amount of parking. Um, wasn't presented well, maybe, or maybe we didn't do enough. So those are two weak areas that we should strengthen, okay, and get those two, two things, um, looked at. One of the things about the Park and Rec Commission is, we do not like to put down asphalt in the park. So if there's a way for us to get around that, we usually take that way. That might not be what you want to hear, okay? And so when you challenge us back, we'll go back and say, okay, let's look at the parking, given that we need it, and let's look at the conflicts and how much growth we could get. So, you know, those are good things to say shouldn't be in a master plan. We'll get back and see what we can do with it.
George, can you put up the slide that shows the areas of prioritization?
With the dollars?
Uh, the, the dollars is fine, but just the complete list of, rather than the individual. Uh, so one thing that staff has asked for is some guidance in terms of areas of prioritization, uh, within the next five years.
And just, I just, I just, I'd want to at least let be known there's not unanimity on some of the issues we discussed. Because I, I'd be reluctant to add parking, and if I did, I'd be very reluctant to add it in the back of the park. That seems wasteful. You know, if we're gonna do it, I'd prefer to say, away up front, if people gotta walk, they gotta walk.
Like, if all the parking outside, they walk in.
Just, I'll, I'll just, as, as, I'll also let you know on the dogs, I, I do think there's a great deal of demand, and I think it's stunning that when the police officers are giving tickets, which they did this weekend, people know about it. Hey, you still got twelve people out there, or ten people out there who are risking getting tickets by letting their dogs run off the park. So we don't know what the demand is based on what the practice is, but we're trying to suppress it, and people are pushing back against it. And I think there's, there's quite a bit of demand, that's the dog owner.
And, uh, just for, for Councilman, a little question about the other concept plans. They're within the Park Master Plan starting in page thirty-three. They talk about them and have examples of what they are. You were, you're somewhat history, since you worked hard on that earlier in your study session.
Well, I'll, I'll give a comment. I, I've been somewhat involved with this, uh, plan because of being the liaison to the Park and Rec Committee. Uh, I think that the concept of investing in improvement of the planting in the park over a extended period of time, not a single year, is a very good idea. I'm glad that it was prioritized. I agree that the, uh, the best solution for that, I think, would be to allocate fifty thousand dollars a year and use that, uh, to improve the planting and the management of the, of the plants, uh, throughout the park. Um, I think in terms of a one-time thing, I think that there are a couple one-time things up here that are, that are recommendations that, in my opinion, are the priorities. I, I want to do something from this master plan that our residents can see. So when they come into the park, they can see there's a change. I think you can do signage, just in the operational budget, that people will recognize. But right now, we have this large asphalt driveway that's got these ballards in front of it that is, was there for a fire department turnaround that is no longer necessary. And I think that that's the big investment up here, about two hundred thousand dollars, uh, to focus on this pedestrian circulation. And the most important use of the park is pedestrian circulation. Whether people walk on their own or they walk with their dogs, this is what the park was used for, and I think it's a great use. We have a hybrid park that is neither a municipal park nor a botanical garden, right? It's not Faloli, and it's not the Redwood City parks. It's in between the two of them. And it, it's got a pastoral feeling to it that is truly a wonderful park because of that. And I, I want to preserve that. Uh, so I like the idea of prioritizing the pedestrian circulation. Uh, I think we can see how it goes once this baseball field is completed and what the, uh, what the parking turnaround situation is in the back end of the park. My guess is that the recommendation is correct, that we're gonna need to put what they call this hammerhead parking turnaround back there. But I think we can see what, the big. But I think we can see what, uh, the biggest demand back there in the back of the park is gonna be related to the baseball field.
Can I maybe ask, make a comment about the hammerhead? Um, is, was there no, um, consideration of just doing, um, like a semi-circle bull nose, you know, like a cul-de-sac around the corner? I'm, I'm not a fan of the hammerhead.
Yeah, it would be better.
Just takes more space.
Well, I don't think it takes that much space.
This is gonna have.
They did a study.
There was, there was the alternative presentation.
You just can't round that corner around?
No, it's gotta be a fire engine turnaround.
It's gotta be able to.
Oh, it's the fire engine turnaround.
Hard.
Well, you got the, the big area, it'd have to be a structure.
No, 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 this isn't, the hammerhead isn't for a fire engine. The hammerhead is to enable a car to come in and back into the other end.
But for circulation for a fire.
It takes more room.
No, we're so, we're.
It, it was presented. They did the presentation.
We had some studies that showed where you just drive, basically drive through.
Yeah.
But it takes, it just takes more space. If you looked at the master plan, if you looked at the parking up by the North Meadow.
You mean the Gilmore House?
Gilmore House. It'd be very similar to that. It's a, it's a bigger encroachment.
Well, gosh, I think the hammerhead is.
I, I think you're, you're on something there from the standpoint of when that parking lot fills up, right? And cars come in, they all back up, right? So, everybody has to back out, right? So, the hammerhead allows you to pull in if the guy behind you gets out of your way.
Right, I mean, I think it's.
And when they're dropping kids off, the best situation is a, is a turnaround. Because they can pull up, drop them off and get out of the way. And this is gonna, this is not gonna clear the, the congestion for the parking lot being full. It just means that you don't have to back up. Everybody'd have to back all the way out. But each one will have to go in and come around and go out, go in and come around and go out. It'd be better than backing all the way out, because I don't like doing that either.
Well, you can pull into a parking lot and then.
If they're full.
Oh, but if it's full.
Yeah, the, the, the problem is when it's full.
So, uh, councilman Lewis, I just wanna respond to the top uses of the park.
Yes.
Okay, so, the top uses are.
Can you get a survey?
Uh, this was, well, this was in the, in the park use diagram in the back of the master plan.
Can you come in?
What's the slide number?
Uh, this doesn't have a slide number on it.
It does have a slide?
Page sixty-one.
What part, what activities should be allowed in?
Park, just, how do people use the park? It's called park use.
Park use, lawn, trails, paths, gardens, picnic area, carriage house.
If you pick the top six there, it's, it's come to, sit in the lawns, the trails and paths, it's the picnic areas, it's the sports fields, the playground, the play school. Those are the top uses in the park. If you look at some of the lower uses, it's the carriage house, the main house, the pavilion. Those are actually the highest parking demand for the site. So, you, you're satisfying the, the general park user with the current parking condition. It's when you introduce events is when it starts to become a parking, potential parking conflict. And so, that's why, as, as the committee talked about a lot, and Steve pointed out, they began to man, not allow all those facilities to, to be filled when there's other park events in the park. And that's why we came up with a smaller parking recommendation to manage it so that the park users can be accommodated and you would limit those larger events in those facilities. That's how, that's the management proposal.
Right.
So, we did anticipate that the carriage house might bring in more people, so we had proposed a smaller additional parking near there. But, but I think the committee felt very strongly that the parking can be managed if you could limit some of those events, which would limit the income.
But I think if you just, I'm, I'm sorry, but it's, it's not, the point's not getting across. You just didn't, the Park Rec didn't wanna consider blacktop areas, so therefore that consideration wasn't put in here. I think that's really what you're saying to us. And all I'm saying, and I think all councilmen, Louis and everybody else here is saying, you're adding a lot more events to the park. There are a lot more events to the park. The master plan is a future vision. You guys didn't want to consider the parking aspect in the park because you don't like asphalt. The point is, it's a planning tool for us to utilize and look at, and that's just the bottom line. You just didn't put it in here, and it should be a concept that we have to use to consider for the future. That's it. We're hammering this point.
Can, can there be, uh, grass parking? I, I know some, some venues have, you know.
We do that now.
Grass parking, right?
We do that now. During the Easter egg hunt, if you've ever been there.
Right.
Uh, we, you know, we use some grass.
At the Easter egg hunt.
The Easter egg hunt, we park, we park out.
Does how many parks do we park? I think we park six hundred parks.
The parking issues out there. I mean, we do it not on a regular basis, but certainly for some of the bigger events in the park.
Are, 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 are you suggesting that as part of the final Park Master Plan diagram, that Park Rec Committee staff and DFS identify, if we had to expand parking, where would we put it? Here's where it would be.
Yes.
If we had to use grass parking, here's where we use overflow parking. Just put that in the master plan, follow the day. These are the spots we can.
Simply so that if, for example, uh, the carriage house comes up as a renovation project and they say they have the demand for fifty additional cars, that we can say, we have the ability to say, well, this is where it was discussed. This seems to be the best area in the park. You've mentioned before that the, the entry gate and where the dog park is the most popular area for people to park. Well, that's also where you just, again, in this concept, said we're gonna add a dog park, or that's a consideration for a dog park, that is gonna have the highest demands. So, again, there's fifty cars that go there for thirty dogs. I don't know. But it seems that everybody wants to park right where we're talking.
Right, and then if you have a hallway, you're gonna go back there and stuff.
But I, I think the Park Rec Committee is thinking we need to use parking as the governor of the park. We don't want the park to be asphalted over. We don't want massive events at the park. We like our historic park. So, if we limit the parking, you won't do that.
That's right.
All right, but then, but in that same argument, then we should no longer do any upgrading or do anything like that to the park because that will increase the demand for the park. And no, we shouldn't be doing that. If these two parallels do not go together, you have to have one, if we're gonna upgrade the park and do all these things, we're gonna do two hundred and some thou- one hundred and ninety thousand dollars of planting, creating a desirable park. We're going to attract more bees. We're gonna attract more flies. It's going to happen. And if we do not consider the option of parking in this concept, we're ignorant. And that's what this is supposed to be for. This is supposed to be a tool for us to be utilizing for future considerations. If all of a sudden, all these things, you know, it gets hit, everybody's in the park at the same day. Even with our alternative source of parking, what do we do? We're gonna have to start using something to consider those options, and that, that this is our tool.
You better come up with an alternative of what, what you're gonna do with the parking, as you said, such as, like we've said for, for large events, have a shuttle, or maybe this bike rental thing, or maybe we could have a van go. But, but I, but, you know, I, I agree. We've talked about the dog park. Maybe it's the right size, maybe it isn't, who knows? But if we cut it back, there'd be additional marketplace there potentially, because it's not being used. It's not a grassy area today. It's wood chips. So, I mean, you could just flag it, I think, is, is, is what Carrie's talking about.
Well, I, I wanna weigh in on this because I don't agree. I, I think that if we're gonna increase parking, I'm fine to say, let's put the cars on the grass and show where we do that. And then the council at the point where they need to do it can decide if they wanna start putting cars on the grass. But if we're gonna add parking, my opinion is it should be in the front. It should not be in the back.
Yeah.
I'm not interested in using any of that space next, where the play school is now for parking. I'm, I am not interested in putting parking in the back. If we're gonna put parking, let's put it in the front. And, you know, maybe we need to create an underground parking facility. But I would not support putting parking in the back under any condition. I think, I'd rather get rid of the park.
I, 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 I agree, but the fact of the matter is, it's not here. And, and I agree, if you, if there would have been.
So, that's what we're talking about.
If there would have been a segment in this that said, if there gets to a point where we have parking demands and it's overflow, this is a section of the park that we recommend, the Park Recreation Group recommends that it's in the front section. We do not want it to be in the back section because it interferes with the mojo of the back section of the park. I'm okay with that, but I just think that it has to be, you know, somewhere where you guys tell us, hey, this is where we really believe that it's the best. Makes sense?
Well, maybe, maybe we've beaten this to death. The front section takes out trees. And we just kinda stay away from that pretty much, because there's just not place for it to do without, with other trade-offs. So, we give you space, but it isn't gonna be a fun one.
But it doesn't mean we're gonna use it. We don't know, but we don't have an option that you guys even really considered. This is the only area you guys wanna consider. And that's just, that gives us something to jump into, but right now, we don't have it.
Okay.
I thought your hammerhead turnaround was a great idea.
It was, it was definitely one of the options, and, and it was, it was thought out. Once again, the overriding thing by the, the committee was to try to keep as much park, park as you could. And if we can manage it, manage it, um, we do have the overflow capabilities. We could surely show that on, on a piece of the master plan.
I, I think you're gonna get people parking in the hammerhead.
Well, well, they better not. It will be painted red and have signs in it, so.
Tell him, tell him we'll be done.
Steve, didn't, wasn't there one point when, wasn't there a consideration of the circular turnaround versus the hammerhead?
That was one of the, that was one of the parking.
If you could show that option, uh, I don't think that's in any of the optional diagrams. You have the three optional diagrams.
It was in one of them, but.
If, if we had, if, if we had the conceptual backup, um, there was also a, a parking plan that showed the turnaround happening on the playground side. So, in other words, on the playground side, there would be one more row of parking, and that would be your turnaround.
On the playground side.
So, and you would pick up additional parking spots as well as building a turnaround in at the same time.
Now, you've got a hammerhead, you've got another hammerhead thing.
They were showing.
That doesn't have it.
Well, this is one that includes, but, but Mike had it in there.
I, I was mistaken. It's, it's not in any of the optional in the report.
Stop right there. So, it actually showed a road going in here with some more parking spaces, and then you could pull in here and do your turnaround. It's not, it's not in your plan. It was one of the ones they got.
Yeah.
Or Mike just got the bruises removed from that one.
Yeah, no, he got jumped on.
All right, so, if we're done with the parking, I don't wanna, can we text you for a minute about the lighting? And what the goal is the lighting? It's ninety-three thousand dollars and closed at night generally. So, explain to you what the goal of the lighting is.
Currently, we have ten light poles in the, in the park, parking lot lights. You've been out there at night when, when, when lights go down, it gets, tho- those ten get eaten up pretty good. So, the thought was, we need to improve those a little taller, uh, better quality of light, whether it's LED, I'm sure they would be LED if we put them in. And then there was also three additional ones that the Park Rec Committee felt would be, for, for what, what the park looks like right now would be very important. They wanted to put one, uh, uh, actually two on the other side of the rear parking lot on the playground side. Two facing that way, and then one over by the Knox Play School in that area to lighten up that area. That would basically take care of the lighting, the pole back, and then poles are there currently, bigger, brighter, uh, more robust.
And the thought is, those would be used only when there's an event or something going on.
No, they, they, they're on every night. They come on at, they're on timers. And they come on at, uh, like about, during the summer hours, they come in about eight-thirty at night and they go off in the morning.
Are they gonna cause problems with Fulton Gables, bigger, brighter, going over their back fences?
Um, undoubtedly, but, you know, we, we need to have safety lighting in the park. I mean, we can, we can put them, right, they have hoods and shields and stuff to directionally light what you're trying to light. We're not gonna broadcast all over. So, that, that's what, that's eighty-three thousand dollars. Typically, a light standard, uh, that doesn't, or if you have a, a current spot that's already got electricity coming to it, they run between about six and nine thousand dollars to redo a pole. Uh, being these are parked, they're not, they're not really, uh, you don't need to get them like on a street, you know, thirty-foot height. It's, we're talking about somewhere, maybe a few feet higher than the more robust light. They're, they're, yeah, between six and nine thousand dollars apiece.
And then still back, the, the park would still be closed at night for most purposes unless there's an, an event or something. It would still have the lights going on.
The parks close at sunset except for events. Events, if you have.
You're just saying without an event, without an event, you have the lights on, you have the park closed, and we'd be lighting up an area, including your playground.
That's right, but that's the way it's always been in the park.
Yeah.
The, the lights are on at night just in case you're stuck in there or you happen to, you know.
The lights are always on in the park, especially at the entrance. We can't turn them off.
Well, yeah, those, those were wired by a previous, those are, but don't worry about it. They're being paid for by the indoor.
They're just fine, huh?
No, they're actually, the electricity for those lights comes from the city, which is size.
Tom Boudet.
Um, so Steve, if I could, if I could ask, um, you and Bob, maybe on the patio, it was, especially with things going on with the event garden and doing the construction for the event garden. And, you know, the patio is in some disrepair, would make sense since it's very close that we would think about.
Do the patio repairs?
Yeah, about the same time. Why did that get pushed way off?
That's, that's, um, the, so you talked about the patio right behind the pavilion and the main house?
Yeah, yeah.
That patio area.
That's part of the event garden.
No, 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 the event garden is directly behind the pavilion. This is the patio that you come down the stairs to the main house and go.
Oh, we're talking the main house. Sorry, I was, I'm.
That, that, I.
I don't have the answer to that, other than if there's repairs that need to be out there, done out there on that patio, they're usually done during the operation.
No, that's not the design.
So.
I've gone out there and done the grinding, the leveling out.
What they're doing is what we approved. This isn't the, that design.
It's, oh, this isn't the design. Okay, okay.
Uh, we're gonna leave our questions, all right. We're just kinda saying our stated points related to.
Yeah, we're on the.
Could you honestly get into what we like?
Um, so, just, I, I give George a little bit of a question, um, and Bill, you'll probably be able to chime in a little bit, because I'm sure you'll know as well. This last year, we actually had, uh, we're having more gardening services per se. We have a master gardener per se.
Ed Murdoch, correct.
So, so here's my little catch with the hundred and ninety thousand overall, although that may be a fine figure. But we've got a lot of planting, a lot of organization going in the park right now. And there's a lot of cutting and this and that of things that we have neglected for years. And it's probably going to take another year before we actually get an idea. Um, I think that if we do have planting in the park, I think that maybe we should have somebody that can help us with the plant and design. Because just putting plants or corneals, this and that, I, I just, I don't wanna, and this is gonna sound bad. I wanna do quality planting that's going to last versus throwing plants out there because somebody has a fifty thousand dollar budget to put plants in to think that we're gonna, I mean, I think it has to make sense. And I know that we have some very good people on Park Rec, they're very familiar with planting, but I think that these things have to go together and just throwing stuff out there.
Right, the, the, the current.
The schematic master plan's got all the, the, the new plants identified, the two thousand five, the two thousand five.
What, what, uh, what someone at least is talking about is we had Ed Murdoch, Ed Gardener, kind of directing what was going on with the park for a while. Ed's leaving. We still have that opportunity to put that, that in the budget for the rest of the cycle, to have somebody like Ed.
Right.
Through MCE, wherever we can get him.
We have to do that.
Have to, in order to manage that fifty thousand dollar allocation.
Well, we haven't approved a fifty thousand dollar allocation.
Right.
Don't everybody get your, you know, head down as.
Yeah, I mean.
No, not that.
No one else is talking about fifty thousand.
So, yes, George, I mean, you're on that line. I think that part of beautification is not necessarily planting, but it also entails a proper, you know, arbers getting out there, cutting and managing some of the very large specimens we have out there that would look a lot better if they were actually trimmed and so on and so forth. So, I'm a little apprehensive on the big dollar figure for that, but I'm very supportive. I know it's gonna sound a little unusual with the lighting aspect of the park. I think that's a safety factor as well, it also illuminating some signs, maybe by coordinating it with the fact that we're adding some signage to the park. Because you're right, the attitude of us having night events or people or whatever to direct them, maybe the lighting can also help us with that. But coordinating that with the ninety-three thousand dollars here makes more sense to me. So, directing people that may be parked in the front portion of the park to walk all the way through the park via lit path with signs, so. Yeah.
So, some, if you're looking at the, the list of priorities, top dress and receive level isolate low spots along the pipe.
That, that was an error.
That's an error?
Yeah, that, that's why the list.
Are you looking at the staff report?
Yeah, 'cause that seems like it's just a regular maintenance.
That is.
Yeah, that's, that's, okay, there's an email and then this is, that's PC, that's video. They need, there is, they needed to put in field too, so this is the correction.
Oh, good, okay. All right, I'm sorry.
Fifty thousand, ninety, surprise.
Oh. Well, it's not in, it's not, that's.
In the Park Master Plan?
Oh, it's not in the, uh, staff.
Of the staff report.
Okay.
Yes, yes, and then I'd like to move on and decide if we're gonna accept this or we want to send it back.
Okay, so.
Okay, so, so I think that, I don't know what the deal is related to the modifications or adding that one additional feature, but I really only think we're talking about, if I'm not wrong, Bill, are we, we're really talking about adding that one concept to this plan, does it need to come back to us, George?
Parking thing? Yeah, we could, we could add that without a problem.
So, I think we can adopt with the amendment related.
Elizabeth wants to see the turnaround alternative, which I think is fine.
And the uses.
There are three things, one is the turnaround alternative, parking opportunities or options and to do a better job of presenting what we looked at with the conflict between the different activities in the park. Those are three things I heard, so we'd like to see, just to have a more complete, uh, comment.
On, on my, my input on, I guess, the, the list that you've, you've given us, um, first off, I think, you know, it's come a long way and, and appreciate you guys taking the input that we gave you last time and, and actually listening to it. Uh, and making the changes and, you know, and trying to address it, you know, I, I agree with you, however, however we address it, whether it's a turnaround bull head thing or, or a, uh, a fishtail, okay, hammerhead. When there's everybody there and, and the back area is, is tied up, people can't turn around and get back because it's absolutely too tight, so something needs to be done there. I'm all in favor of putting more money into the planting, provided that we have, you know, a little bit of direction, somebody really thinks through the watering systems that we have there and how we're watering so that we're not planting, you know, oak trees next to firms that need watering all the time and we're killing what we're planting like has been done in the past potentially or accidentally. So, so, yeah, I don't know if after we get things back under control and we upgrade everything, if, if in fact it's a fifty thousand dollar a year thing or one ninety is really the number, I'd like to see the detail. The pedestrian circulation to me sounds, especially that front area and some of the new cut-throughs, I'm, I'm all in favor of that, I think that there are additional workarounds in the back part and, and I know there's gonna be potentially some artwork that's gonna go back there from the art committee, so, um, making that look nice and making it good for not only people walking, but, you know, there's a group of yoga, young mothers that run through the park with their baby carriages and we wouldn't wanna have any accidents with that.
I gotta catch them and collect that fee, by the way.
Yeah, so, um, so the pedestrian circulation and the, you know, those, those two items are good, um, with regards to the, to the preschool, um, it is a big chunk of money, I guess the, the question for me is whether or not we really need to have a play school in the park. Um, so in the study as to with relocation, I guess the question would be really, is there overwhelming the demand for it and would, would any costs for upgrading it could be recouped with, you know, could the play school recoup the leasehold improvements that are gonna be required to, to move this thing? Um, I will suggest that, uh, it, this is a preschool, so mothers aren't just coming by and opening the door and saying, get out to three and four-year-olds, okay, they, they park their cars and they walk their kids to the classes, they don't just dump them off, in fact, that's one of the issues over, that's a law, so even in third grade and second grade, the mothers are still doing that. So, to say that we just need to turn around so that we can run traffic through there, that's, that, that is a fallacy because again, these are three and four-year-olds and they're not gonna get spit dumped out. Lastly, on the off-leash dog area, I think in, until we know exactly how large it should be, I, I have no issue with, with investing, you know, not twenty-five thousand dollars, but some money into really sizing what it might be because the size and the cost associated with the size that was being proposed is absolutely a non-starter with me. Uh, and, and so I, I, I'm really concerned about it and as it was pointed out, you know, by Ann, if, you know, if you, and, and by yourself, uh, a dog park's gonna bring a lot of people, okay, and, and there are other dog parks around and, you know, we don't need to, it is, it is a problem. And we should have something, but maybe not as large as what is being proposed, I, I guess is really my, my comment, uh, I like where it is now as opposed to having it in the North Meadow, which is the most pristine area that we have, so, so I appreciate you, you all listening to us and moving it there, but, um, I would, again, suggest that the patio item be brought up, maybe, uh, like we, like I just said, brought up in my question. Maybe Parks and Rec might wanna consider that because to me, it does couple well with the activities going on with the event garden, you know, and it ma- it makes that whole area just a really nice patio area and, and, and a special place for, for larger events such as weddings and things like that, so. That seemed to fall off the list and I, and I think it, it might be worthwhile considering moving it up, so, I think the numbers are big and they're hard to swallow, but that's my, that's two cents on my input, um, but just, you know, on the preschool, I'd like to do a little, add, add to the study as to whether or not we want to have it.
Ju- just so you know, the twenty-five thousand dollars, which is, is it fifteen for the preschool and ten for the courtyard, were, were, the, the way that Mike came up with those numbers was basically that's an investigation for design, uh, looking at things like utility movement, there's a lot of high-powered PG&E stuff going through there, there's main water lines, there's, we'll need a sewer connect and really, that money is looking at those things, it's not really looking at the, the concept as you were speaking of, of is that the right place to put, it's not a design, so to speak. It's more of a, uh, you know, the first steps into moving a building, the feasibility of it.
But I think I.
Yeah.
And then, you know, that next step would be when you hire a design, you know, you, you put the money into the design of that, of, of, of that facility, that's, that's where you start.
But there's one thing to say that that relocation study can't be brought to the council and, 'cause we go out and get results to do that, when expanded to ask the policy question, do you want preschool in the park?
Expanded. Right.
Right, yeah, so, I, um, I'm all for moving the preschool, if, if we keep the preschool, you know, up next to the Gilmore House, I think that's an excellent idea, I also think that, uh, some of this, um, uh, uh, cost and actually installing the trailers, uh, because there's, there's, this is not gonna happen next, next week or something, but we need to think about our, um, uh, building department. And I think there has been discussion about maybe putting our building department, uh, in new trailers over there, um, because they're falling apart right now and that could be a more immediate, um, uh, construction project that would require this, so, uh, I'm not so keen on relocating the maintenance courtyard, uh, I think that's an, an expense that maybe we don't need to, uh, to undertake, um, but.
Would you lease the roads for the, or?
She, what she's talking about is the relocation of the permanent center on a temporary basis staging connected to Civic Center project, so the trailers could be, trailer, could be leased or bought. There's a, a nexus between if we put trailers there and if you do intend to relocate the preschool and keep it in the park, there's a connectivity there, maybe we could purchase trailers that works for Knox, Knox could then buy them, capital campaign, there's all kinds of options that really have to be worked out.
Yeah.
Uh, and haven't been thought all the way through yet, but.
Yeah, you know, love and rebanding, but yeah, I see what you're saying.
So, um, yeah, so I think that, the, the top three, um, are, uh, really critical, we could, we need to figure out how we, uh, allocate the monies over the next five years to, to, uh, support that. And then the moving of the preschool or installation of, uh, new trailers, um, next to Gilmore for a double use.
And then to finish with.
And I'm not, I'm not real keen about the off-leash dog area.
Well, ju- just to finish with, you know, I had mentioned that, uh, the, the, what this one was really budgeted for, just so you know, the off-leash dog design area, that number included public churets? Just to, to see, do we want the off-leash, off-leash dog area, if so, how big should it be, it would start in that thing, what would you want the fencing made out of, do you want, you know, wood fencing, do you want steel fencing? You know, what would the look be, the size be for the small dog area, the big dog area, here's a general area where we put it, that, that's what that money would, would be used for is those type of things, so you would know what the, what the, you know, public and at, or the Atherton residents, how they feel about building an off-leash dog area.
I, I would like to say, and I, I, I would like the park to stabilize before we, you know, go into that because I think that that is going to be something that would be a big attraction and we've got so many moving parks going on in that park right now and I just like everything, which also includes the potential moving of structures, once everything gets done to a point where it settles, then we can say, gosh, you know, this, we'll spend some money to consider this, but I think we're a wee bit premature in spending money other than the fact that it's on this and it's on a design to do anything other than that, at this point, Mike, I agree with it.
So, I, I, I agree with that, I, in terms of priorities, what I'd look at over the immediate term, I'd look at the top four, I wouldn't look at the, yeah, or the top five, I wouldn't look at the.
And the pavilion parking turnaround, yeah, I want that to be redesigned.
Well, I think you, I think they can give, I think they've done the alternative, they just didn't show it.
Okay.
Because they, I think the feedback from Park and Rec was it took a little bit too much space, but they can include that, they can show that alternative.
So, can I ask a quick, quick question about the parking, when it, looking at it, it looks like the problem is, is because that parking, it's, it's kinda linear, right? And so, and, and so if it were made, was there any thought about, you know, not adding the parking, but just like reconfiguring that, um, that, uh, parking lot to make it more rectangular or square, I'm trying to find the, the design, um.
It's a good idea.
Next, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Which, which would not have it so linear, you know, I, I wanna find my little.
To get more spaces, to get more spaces, you mean?
Well, you might even get more spaces, it's right next to the carriage house, I've lost the design.
The conceptual plan?
Yes.
Phase thirty-nine, forty, forty-eight, yeah.
Oh, it's, okay, there it is, yeah, um, I don't know.
Well, could, could we, could we potentially say that, and we'd like to move forward with something with regards to the, the planning, but, parking, but we need an alternative design for the design?
Well, I, I, I think there's a lot of comments tonight.
Yeah.
And some of them have to do with what the actual look of the master plan is when it comes forward, whether or not it includes the off-leash dog area as a list of priorities in the five-year plan or whatever, so, there needs to be some modifications, so I wouldn't suggest that you accept the master plan this evening, rather.
Yeah.
I know, throw it back unfortunately to, to Park and Rec, we need to take one more stab at, at, at the parking issue, identifying on a plan what those optional parking areas might be and when they are ever needed to improve temporary ones. Would you like them to remove entirely the off-leash dog area from the park master plan?
I'd go back to my, I raised it earlier and I said it earlier, I think that's an important part of the park, I really do, I think, I think that would make a real difference in the park use, um.
Positively.
Positively, I think it's, I think it's a really nice thing and I think that, that we're putting people in a difficult situation now where we're telling them you can't walk your dogs there when people are without, you know, on leash, um, and people are, and, and we should think about, I think there's a strong demand out there for people to do that. And I walk my dog every day in that park, every day on a leash, by the way, every day in that park and I talk to people, you know, doing that and I just, I think we're underestimating the, the, the demand and I don't think it's a demand from Redwood City or anywhere else, I think there are a lot of people in, in, who are Athertonians who use the park, who'd like to have a place to let their dogs run free.
So, leave it as a potential, but low priority off the, off the financing.
Five-year plan.
Kind of thing, uh, expand the analysis of uses in the park a little bit to talk about what the top ten are, where the conflicts might be, also talk about how we manage the parking demand, you, the council did adopt when we reinstituted events at the park, a parking demand management plan. So, incorporate that maybe into the, to the master plan.
Add that signage thing to this, 'cause it's not.
Well, signage you're gonna do operationally.
Operationally, that was a low-cost item, so we'll put that in operationally and then include the alternatives for, uh, parking turnaround hammerhead at the end, however that looks like, at least include those so you can see those.
Yeah.
And there was also some talk about moving the, the patio plant up into the five-year plan?
Well, that, that would come from the final recommendation from Park and Rec, yeah, it wasn't in there now, it's a top five.
That's more maintenance, that's, but, but Bill, that's more maintenance, it's not like.
Well, they had it listed because I think it was a big dollar, I think it was twenty-five or forty thousand dollars.
Twenty-five, forty thousand, I mean, that's a lot of money, but it's not like two hundred thousand dollars, okay?
Okay, it just happened to be out of charge.
Yeah, it, it, it's, it's in there as an itemized thing, but whether Park and Rec sees it as a priority or high priority, low priority, that would still come back in your final acceptance of the plan with their priority list and you can move it up or down or add it, it's up to the council.
And I thought I heard a sense of the council that, that to the extent we can, moving the parking to the front, what Rick described as the front of the park was desirable, that it gets to expand.
Right.
Definitely.
If, if, if there's an alternative location identified, I know Steve's got, you've got places you use like for the Easter egg hunt where you park cars.
But that's the North Meadow.
That's supervised parking only.
Right, and supervised parking where they shrink the size of the spots and place the cars in there and do all kinds of things, that's temporary parking on a, a large event basis, but then you're also asking for identify where we would put a permanent, whether it's pervious or impervious parking lot in the park, and if we're gonna do that, put it at the front.
Yes.
And what that impact is, how many trees have to go and those sorts of things, okay?
Include covering the Atherton channel.
And then if you do that, could you get rid of some of the parking in the back?
Well, the, I don't think the objective or the direction is get rid of parking, it is additional parking.
If we had to expand.
Right.
I see, okay, alright.
We're good? Go ahead, George, did I mean that, uh, the preschool only and courtyard relocation studies stay on that list or?
I think the pre, that what I heard is the preschool one, and maybe it was carrying about mine, not, but not yours, but the preschool one could still be on there 'cause it's something that might be happening, but if it's on there, you need a policy choice, whether or not you want a preschool in there, so the relocation study needs to include that policy decision, what's your reflection on the maintenance building relocation study?
Well, I, I, myself personally, if in fact there's upgrades going next door, it might be appropriate to create a better venue to move it over, uh, so that, you know, if.
I don't think it's necessary.
I agree, if you're gonna do something with the carriage house, then, I mean, you don't wanna have a, a refa- if in fact they can raise the money, you know, and that's, again, seventy years downstream, but if they can, then they're not gonna wanna have that, that ugly courtyard sitting right next to where they're having outdoor tables.
Right.
Right, okay, I, I, I agree with that.
Okay, the other thing I wanted to ask is about this amphitheater design, because I just saw it again on the picture, what kind of maintenance is gonna be required to maintain that, because it's terraced and it's grassy and, you know, I mean, you're gonna have to have special lawn mowers and hedgers and stuff.
Once again, that, that can be as much maintenance as, as we choose to design it with, uh, if you put grass, there'll be more maintenance than you, if you make it out of stone, those, those gardens can be made a bunch of different ways, but generally, normally, they're, even with grass on them, they're pretty low maintenance. To run, to run a lawn mower room is not.
The riser too, the tread and the riser.
You know? Well, a lot of times you let the grass grow and you don't irrigate it, so towards the end of the summer, it's just kinda faded grass. And then during the winter, it comes back green and you use of, you know, seasonal grass and there. There, there's, there's different ways to, to do that.
The, the design will bear out the maintenance costs and when, when we actually get to the design phase, so the issue, this is not, nothing to do with design, this is purely just the master plan.
Right. Right, those are concepts.
So, when you get to the details, then the.
The concepts are.
So, I think that we've agreed to send it back, we don't need a motion to that.
You need a motion to continue it to the, I think, is it a month enough time to address these issues, Mike and Bob, so?
Yes.
Let's give them a month and they can ask for an extension.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we should continue, I'd like the move that we continue, uh, looking at the park master plan, uh, until the next meeting and ask that the Park and Rec Committee, uh, make the modifications of the discussions that they've heard tonight, right?
I'll say the same. All in favor?
Okay.
I would like to thank the council very much for your input, it's been very valuable, thank you.
So, next item on the table, or all the things?
So, it's okay.
About forty feet, so I had to do thirty-five, take a.
Next item on the agenda, uh, is the issue regarding.
Yes.
Let's finish, correct.
A dog park is open, open, thank you, Mr. Mary, members of the council, in the interest of time, you have the staff report before you, and I'm sure you've all read it thoroughly, uh, in it, we also talked about alternatives, there are two alternatives that we talked about, one was Palo Alto, uh, at this point, they're in the same boat that, uh, Seminole County is with an animal shelter, they weren't really interested in adding another extension to their services when they were still facing a crisis of space. And then there was Silicon Valley Animal Control Agencies, they weren't interested in really talking to us about numbers, but they are talking to Menlo Park about numbers and, uh, so they said if they actually get Menlo Park, they might be interested in active, 'cause at that point it might make sense from a proximity perspective, but right now it does not. Cause at that point it might make sense from a proximity perspective, but right now it is not. Uh, Menlo Park is, got it tentatively on their agenda for the end of March, that might get pushed to April, we don't know. We're not even sure if it'll actually get heard in, in April. Uh, but the staff recommendation at this point is if you think that the services with Peninsula Humane Society through the counties is a good deal for the town. Uh, and provides good services, you can award the contract. Doing so means we're locked into a five-year term, we can't get out over that five-year period if we decide to go elsewhere or think another deal's better. Uh, we have to wait until the end, that means though, we do get to find out what that operational cost is of the new shelter. PHS will run that new shelter with the county for a couple of years, at the end of that, the county said they might be interested in going out to bid, see what else is out there with PHS or otherwise. So you have that. Uh, if you don't enter into the contract now, you can push it for another month, they're pushing a lot of things to April at this point, but you can push it for another month. See what Menlo Park, uh, turns out with SBACA, if they end up going with them, then our option might open it up. If they don't, we're pretty much where we are with PHS and you approve the agreement at that point, that concludes the staff report.
Questions of clarification?
So if we push this off, there's no harm in pushing it off for a month?
No.
And pushing it off for a month, can we put this on the consent agenda?
I, I'm fine with that, that's a matter for council.
Hey, you're streamlining here, I'm working with you.
Any other questions of clarification?
Just one, you, you're saying we can be locked in for five years, that's, you're convinced that's non-negotiable, that is a done effect?
Yes.
I don't have any questions, I have a comment.
Uh, any public comment on this matter? Okay, I'll ask quickly.
So I just wanna say that, um, staff, Teresa and George, this is a very, very detailed and complete report. Uh, it was very informational, thank you very much, it, it just had a lot of history, a lot of, uh, facts and figures, and it, I compliment you for this. Um, and, um, my basic feeling in doing the math, uh, with the contract with the, uh, PHS is that, uh, we got five thousand dollars a month. I don't think we could do it for five thousand dollars a month if we hired an animal control person for, um, uh, our, our city. You know, we just couldn't, so I think that, it sounds like a lot of money, sixty thousand dollars, you know, and that, and that does include the, uh, payment of the facility going forward. Um, but, uh, based on the investigation and what's gonna happen with Menlo Park and all that, I would think that we should continue it. I'd like to take staff's recommendation, continue it until we know what happens with Menlo Park and Palo Alto.
Yeah, so, so, um, I, I am of the same mind as, uh, as the vice mayor. That I think that really we have nothing really to lose at this point in time, waiting for Menlo Park. Um, what was concerning to me, and, you know, I understand where we are, this is a very expensive proposition. I realize that, you know, we can't do it by ourselves, et cetera, but, but at the same time, every year this comes up, we complained a little bit about it. And when it, when it last came to us, when we were talking about this, it looked like it was something that if we decided to get in, we were gonna get in and we could get in, get out each year. And, and, you know, now they've locked us in for five years, so I don't, I don't like that brinksmanship, it's, you know, we're, we're down to the end and they, uh, you know, and the rules of the game change. So I'd like to at least have the opportunity to understand if Menlo Park is going to move forward. Um, if they don't do something in, in the short term and we have to make a decision, then obviously we already had this thing vetted and we know what we're getting into. But, uh, it's not gonna hurt for us to continue it as well.
Other comments?
Uh, I agree.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion that we continue the discussion on item number twenty-two.
And a motion?
Twenty-two.
Uh, to next month when we have better information with regards to how, uh, Menlo Park is, is, uh, pursuing an alternative solution that we could possibly piggyback on.
Nice, and, and can I add, and if nothing has changed, full consent count.
I'm, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, I don't think that in the motion, but I agree with that.
I just amended the motion.
Well, somebody can go ahead and pull it, okay, that's true, easily, okay, all in favor?
All right. All right. Uh, let's see, next item is council reports, thank you Vice Mayor Lewis.
I did, I did my council report, and, uh, there are links to some really interesting, uh, I printed out my color sheets. But if you go on the links, it's, uh, studying about, from the CK, about, uh, the highway one-on-one express lane feasibility study. Uh, CK is looking, um, at, um, extending the HOV lane from Whipple on up to, uh, highway three eighty. Um, just, you know, short of San Francisco because of the constraints. Um, so, um, looking at all of the feasibility of maybe a hot lane or tow lane or whatever. And then there is this other, um, operational management of US one-on-one, that one-on-one, in that section is like, it ranks like the, the most congested, uh, uh, stretch of freeway, um, in our area. So, I hope you have a chance to take a look at my report and click on the links that I gave you.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Just click on the links.
Okay, uh, future agenda items? Here and then, uh, are there any other public comments? Uh, here and then, I would love a motion to a-
Send them.
Some of them.
Send them.
All in favor?
All right.